This work session of the Germantown Municipal School District is now in session. Item number one is approval of nomination for the 2019 T S B A School Volunteer Recognition Award, Mr. Manuel.
So know that we've reached out to our school's administration asking for a T S B A volunteer award, this is something that we have to submit to them, but it does require a board vote, and we are excited that, I'm sure I'm gonna mess up her name, Talibak Corks, who volunteers at Farmington in the library, she is there 24/7, is our recognition for this award, so we would like if the board would nominate them so that we could have one of ours in the running to win the T S B A award.
Is there any discussion?
I'm excited about this individual and the fact that she is just so committed, so much of her commitment to the library. It's easy to recognize those who are P D A presidents or whatever, P D A presidents or whoever, but sometimes those quiet people that are federal presidents, I'm very excited about them.
We couldn't do without those back.
The unsung silent heroes, yes. Day in, day out, absolutely. Okay, so that will go to the work, to the board meeting. The second item is the annual review revision of policies, the first reading. Mr. Jones?
First, we have revisions to F 2.806 bids and quotations. Basically what that is doing is we follow the city of Germantown's purchasing policies and procedures, so that is incorporating those changes that they just made recently into our policy. So the dollar threshold for limitation for bid is increased from $10,000 to $25,000. I think the state actually did that back in July of 2018.
So we're updating it to follow the state.
To mirror the city.
Actually to mirror the city. They just made those changes. And then a request for quotation or three quotes for purchases, $10,000 and $24,999. Anything less than $10,000 would just be an online quote or email.
Any discussion, any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay. Next item is item number three, approval of fiscal year 1920 consolidated funding. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, still on the same.
Yeah, I've got one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Go ahead.
And for the 6.701, basically just adding the T S B A recommended policy for online donations, some of the teachers at the schools will do online fundraisers, donors choose and go fund me, so basically just requiring the principal and financial secretaries.
Okay. So basically we can't go rogue and do another.
Right.
And they can't say that it's a school hand, it's not.
That's correct.
Right. And all the fundraisers have to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Ms. Park.
We have one policy in the department that we're requesting revision on, it is the Finnish learners' policy. The only addition that you see in this policy is the line item where it says that we will be tracking students who have exited the program. This is good practice in general, but this stayed on federal law.
That's why we call this strange.
Well, you pointed that out in the presentation earlier in the retreat, I was waiting to hear that, so that was the reason why I mean, it's expected, expected. So based on the amount of people in that program, I've been amazed at how many are in those programs. And so when they get out, it doesn't matter which grade level they get out, from that moment it'll start, and you'll need to monitor what that looks like for them because of that previous participation.
You know, Dr. Howe, who was our middle school representative for teacher of the year, she's doing an incredible job, and same for all of our E S L teachers, about moving them out of the program so quickly that they're becoming fluent within one or two years, yes. Once again, it's another program that's tops in the state for how quickly we're moving them.
It's one of our indicators for our accountability model, so the A L P A is correct, that's the way that that's what they take.
That puts them.
Okay. Go ahead. We are ready to go to three, approval of fiscal year 1920 consolidated funding application.
Okay, this is a requirement of our federal E plan that they have that we submit our district agreement plan and consolidated funding application for I D E A and E S C A grants, and I'm happy to be presenting that to you, but this, we haven't had it presented to the board documentation for that, so that's from the form of today to show you that we have presented it to the board and also to report it to the state.
Any comments? Thank you. Number four, approval for purchase of social studies, world languages, and C T E textbooks.
Okay, based on preliminary numbers, this is our total amount of what we will be spending, of course it's above $100,000 threshold, so we needed to bring it to you for your approval, the purchases of the textbooks for C T E business, social studies, and world languages, a total to amount at this time of $580,000. Whether you have a grade as adoption and grade by group step or like.
Were the waivers for the Latin textbooks accepted?
They have not given us response to that.
So that, is that not included in those amounts?
That is not included in this amount, so that would be second purchase, if it's not granted and if it's not over $100,000, we'll see.
Just what's the business that, is that covered? Is the personal finance system?
Any other questions?
What's the balance of online textbook, paper, hardback book with this?
So this year, all of the ones that were on the state, that's the adoption list for your social studies, was not really the one good piece of what we saw with the science. So what we've done is we've tried to consolidate, but textbook companies will give their money no matter what. So they later charge you for the hard copy, or they'll charge you, we've got access to all the hard copies, we have extras at the school in case, because we need to have a hard copy at home, but then we also pay for licenses to have the online version, so it can be incorporated into the school of the, or the thing that is the person that schools use.
Okay.
So we try to blend it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manuel.
Okay.
Where to go?
It's right there.
Number five, miscellaneous G M S D fiscal year 2018, 19 budget amendments, Mr. Jones?
There they are, right here. So I can just click on it.
First, we have budget number 31, that's increasing salaries and fringe benefits for vacation pay for someone who's retiring. I'm trying to talk him out of it, don't make his league balances to me, but.
That was, that was 31.
31.
But yes.
He's not the only one that's cashed out, it's.
Number 30, increasing our appropriation in the O P E B trust fund for retiring stipends and retiring medical claims, just making sure that we have enough appropriated to make those disbursements at the end of the year.
Have the claims increase?
June 30th. Yeah, they've increased, and probably have about, close to $40,000 available for the next four continuing portion, so just a safety. And number 29, that's a reallocation of C T E Perkins basic funds.
Yeah, so he's going backwards, this was Mr. Haddo.
That's a federal appropriate, Dr. Haddo. So if there's any detailed questions, she's.
Yeah, this is the one, C T.
Access funds vocational, and what are you purchasing? We don't have a chance to carry over any funds for Perkins, and last year, we kind of, they took it on because it was shared services, so the plan that we built last year was just in case we didn't do Perkins reserve grant, so some things were counted for in both budgets, and this year, we are also trying to increase the number of industry certifications that we offer at the high school, so with that, some of our computer equipment could not operate the solid works, the STEM industry certifications, so you'll see a large amount made into vocational equipment to purchase the computers, so that we can offer those. And the other ones, we are adjusting based on what our expenditures are, so that we're trying to spend everything out later.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Item number six, G M S D General Fund Budget fiscal year 2019, 2020 after second reading.
This is our second and final reading, I thought I would just focus on the changes for you, from the first reading to the second reading, there's a separate document that shows that for you, kind of a reconciliation between the two readings. Everybody got that in one page?
Yes.
So we're moving from a total budget of $69 million to roughly $61.2 million, we're projecting an additional $200,000 in B N P revenue, an additional maintenance effort from the city of Germantown, roughly $10,700, and looking at using some additional reserves, around $88,000, and that's coming from sales tax and eighteen.
And this additional maintenance effort is not, because being made is increased in maintenance effort, it is still a legal base?
Right, correct, it's just a reassessment. How we're gonna use the funds, you'll see first in regular education, one regular teacher at Forest Hill.
So just to clarify, so we really added three positions that we discussed, one was a half a position to help with E I S, which is the data management system to the state, the other, because we talked about whole child, was a social worker to serve the high school, and then we had this extra funding, which wouldn't fund a full counselor, but we were really discussing and debating what would be the use of that money, so I said, let's not incur something that we may have to pay next year, let's just sit on that money. So by that, we put it in to growth position for teachers, remember we always, historically we've had five growth positions, we had four, so I just said, let's make a fifth growth position, then it's not a recurring position, that money can sit. Mr. Kathy laughs because we could have dropped that into capital outlay where we usually hold funding, but it doesn't matter, but if we see significant growth across the district, of course we'll come present to you, I just said that'll be a placeholder for us, so we really added the half E I S and a social worker position.
Any other questions? The next item is item number seven.
He's going to item seven.
Have we gotten final numbers, like we're getting from Shelby County? I'm just curious if it's not till July.
Usually, yeah, they'll finalize their budget in June.
But now we're back on.
Right. Item number seven is G M S D fiscal year 2019, 20, federal capital cafeteria, health insurance, and O P E B budgets after first reading, Mr. Jones?
Okay, for the FY 2020 year, we have approximately $3,250,000 total federal funds budget. I just to bring to your attention Carl Perkins, who's around in I D E A discretion, budgets may come on the second reading, if not, we'll do those as a budget next fiscal.
So just to clarify, I know that it's difficult for people who don't live in our budget world to see that we still have some holes left in filling these pieces, that's because we are not told from the state or from the federal government, the revenues, I think we're still getting revisions on our plans today about how we need to allocate our funding, so know that these are projections and it's an ongoing process until, as you know, the board's finally gonna approve these before the fiscal year starts.
Right, so for the second reading, you should see some, attention to some adjustments and line changes for the federal. For title one, what, Ann Perkins, Dr. Humphman's available to give some additional information on those.
Anyone like to know more?
Take a look at your last money. You lost next year.
Yes.
Yes.
The money, the money that we rewarded is legal.
For the title one, yes.
And Ms. Huffman's available, if you have any questions on I D E A, Harpenee or preschool.
Any questions?
Yes.
We talked about it, where it came up in the retreat, with the addition of the extra for higher percentage of typical peers, and then the kind of costs associated with that, I guess, as far as payment, do we know what that pays for looks like for the change?
Yeah, so we built that into our budget, like we could find the exact amount.
We talked about that, but since we officially know that we're doing the extra.
And that is, and that's one of those changes, especially when we talk to our legislators, that they don't understand, because we don't qualify for a pre-K program in our schools, for us to provide typical peers for our special needs students, that means we're funding teachers and staff to educate those students without any funding from the state or federal government, so know that's one of those challenges that we have, so to be compliant with the mainstreaming of our students, that's why we have this program, so we could do, Ms. Huffman can look before the meeting and tell us the exact amounts or approximate of what it has added to us, but it is like adding.
Because I've heard you saying, I want those people, if they don't fully understand, to make sure that they realize what the fiscal impact on us is, and that it's not funded.
It is, essentially it's like adding a classroom, and if you look at the teacher and assistants that are, they're with that special education, or that preschool classroom, that's what you're talking about, adding is one full classroom just for the typical peers, but Ms. Huffman.
Yes, we are offsetting that continuing to be, by operating, this year maybe to $550 per semester, since we increased the budget. So headed that, the I D E A money for preschool is very minimal, it's just for professional development, it did help purchase supplies for the new classroom at Forest Hill, and we added that second one outside of that, but we also have other grants, and we haven't heard that we got the additional grant through the state department, so that could be additional revenue, and we are searching for ways to fund it, but it's going to have to fall on development, but maybe this year, the additional teachers did have to come through. That's not gonna be, because I feel the same way, even without the positive peers to our population, preschool seats, just, it seems like almost triple every year, and students are down.
I think we just need to say the number out loud.
So I can tell you that when we.
13,408.
Well, I can, yes, that we're given, I can tell you that a teacher with benefits, when we look at what the district is providing for budgeting purposes, we plug in $75,000 for that teacher with the district portion of benefits, now that's not what they're taking home, obviously, but know that we've got at least one teaching position there, I know that we had to have assistant positions, pair professionals, you have equipment in there, so minimally you're well over $100,000 for this type of program that is not funded.
Per classroom.
Per classroom.
408 dollars for the entire program, the entire district.
Yes, $13,000, 408 dollars.
The goodness is, one of our representatives emailed me and told me that they fully funded our B E P this year.
So yes, it is a substant, it is a substantial cost, this is an example of a program where we are required to provide it and don't receive funding for these students, we're paying for it out of our general fund.
It is an unfunded mandate.
We have changed, who's gonna be in those classrooms?
Yes.
And we have changed because we were being for not having a higher percentage of typical peers.
Next budget is school nutrition on page 23. It's a $1.6 million budget, sales and U S D A reimbursements are based on figures provided by a pair of lawn, and then the corresponding contracted services and the rest are district expenditures. Any questions? Next up is capital improvements, we have right now roughly a $12.5 million budget estimating what we may receive from accounting commission, hopefully we'll be able to fine tune that as we move into the FY 20 fiscal year, and we will update this budget through budget amendments. And the rest are estimates to fund the remaining construction. And Mr. Kathy's available, if you have any detailed questions?
Okay, question? Okay.
Health insurance fund, roughly a $5.3 million budget, basically projections for FY 2020 are in FY 2019.
And again, we don't think we're gonna be raising.
No, we are not raising rates again this year, so five years.
Five years without raising rates.
We still have reserves right around 1.9 million, we're looking at using some of those at the end of this year, as well as potentially next year, and our consultant recommends about 13% of the claims, so maintaining the balance of that amount, so we would still have balances available there after we do such as in the next two years.
Open.
And the last one is O P E B trust, this was review about the O P E B commission on main line, we have the board contributions at 755,000, that matches our general fund operating budget as far as what the board is going to contribute to the claim, the rest are retiring contributions and investment activity, we've increased retiring stipends, and again, bringing our retiring claims back up based upon what we're seeing this year. So still projecting increases in fund balance at 570,000.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Jones? The next item is the contract renewal with A R A Mark, which is you.
With Air Mark, but we will hold that one, we need to pull that because it is still the, you know, we have to get approval from the state nutrition department.
It's been legalized and approved by the regional office of school nutrition, Nashville office of school nutrition has asked that we make an amendment that has to do with our U S D A commodities at the end of the contract period.
So we're just gonna pull this and bring it back to you when it's ready for full approval.
So that will be removed from, so we will table it.
Tabled, yes, to the June meeting.
Till the June meeting.
It can stay on the agenda, but I will just mention please.
Okay. Item number nine is maintenance contract extension, which is Mr. Kathy.
This is an amendment to extend our contract for one year with G C A, there is a 2% contract increase in this, which I thought was reasonable, given rising cost of equipment, et cetera. The, it's a service contract, it must have some drawbacks, the one I came up with was the dam in Harpenee, when the city hit the electrical line while renovating the park, and it fried all of the electrical to the portals that day, and we had to move all of the students in, in 10 classrooms into the building. Our outsourced maintenance contracts, they have to provide one electrician, that's what they provided for us, so we had to, I had to send the other two people that work in the department there, and they were replacing bulbs in those until 9 o'clock at night, so we could have class the next day. It would have been nice to have been in house maintenance team, and I said today, everybody's electricians and we're all replacing bulbs in those. So this is not, this is not a bad contract, it's been a very good, serviceable contract, and the people that work in the positions are very skilled in their trades, and we did negotiate next year for no contract increase for the addition of Forest Hill Arena and the district office, because most things are under warranty year one at those buildings. It's going to make sense for us to at least look at it and in-house maintenance staff next year, because they've made it very clear that yes, for this year, there won't be a contract increase, but they will fully be expecting a contract increase the following year for Forest Hill Arena and the district office, so at that point, it'll make sense for us to do a financial analysis of if it would protect and bring it in-house, in the meantime, we are recommending to do this one-year contract extension with G C A for maintenance services, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about maintenance.
It says it reflects a 2% increase?
Correct.
And Mr. Kathy's already built that into the budget.
But that longs as, I said, Forest Hill Arena.
Does not include Forest Hill Arena or the district office, so there hasn't been any contract increase for those buildings being added, but they have agreed to do minor mandatory orders that are not governed or warranted.
Any other questions?
How those projects are finished, this likely will come back and talk about them.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion, item number 10 is the T M L insurance renewal, Mr. Kathy.
We have the agenda attached, I'm just gonna go over, because the coverages really haven't changed, I've got David McDonald here, if out there any questions as it relates to insurance, but page three really gives a good breakdown and summary of what the premiums were last year versus what they were this year on property, there is a $26,849 increase, that's really all because of adding Forest Hill Elementary and the district office to the coverage, workers' compensation decreased $915, liability decreased $3,651, student accident decreased $5,750, so it's an overall premium increase of $16,533, with us ensuring two additional buildings and all the contents with it. Any questions on the insurance renewal? Any questions, sir?
Mr. McDonald?
At least we're getting a decrease in our renewal premiums due to improved loss.
Right.
And one other thing I did want to mention, it's not a lot, but it always is something, you are your own insurance company, so you're in a captive that has municipals, municipalities all over the state, along with municipal school districts, and so you're actually getting a dividend of $5,373, and that's always good, because what they do is what normal insurance companies would call profit, and they would take to the bank, they put out member dividend credits to all their members according to their experience and the size of the account.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The next item is item number 11, the bid approval for the Houston High School Athletic Field House.
I want to take a little time on this item, you have a bid tabulation attached to your board agenda, as you can see, the low bid was Roder Taber Griner, came in at $3,598,000. There were two bids that were way off, but the three bids that were competitive were all kind of right there together, so we didn't look at it as an anomaly, but it was unexpected. The, for frame of reference, this, the field house is a 12,351 square foot facility, bidding where it bid at, that's around $290 per square foot, for frame of reference, the Riverdale Division bid $165 a square foot, Forest Hill Elementary bid around $193 a square foot, district office bid around $187 per square foot, this bid didn't include a lot of F F and E, the weight equipment, low voltage, Mr. Pierce requested we not have low voltage in the bid, so he can handle that outside of the contract, there's a cost that's gonna be associated with low load work, that security system, that's camera pulling all the cable and wire, so long story short, I think after we pay design, architecture and engineering fees, plus F F and E, this is a $4 million project, assuming the board approves this bid tonight, so that's not what we're expecting, we're expecting a $3 million project. So that's not what we're expecting, we're expecting a three million dollar project. So I'm explaining that to explain that's real, it was unexpected. And we do our best to design bid so that this doesn't happen, but once it goes out, we don't have any control over that. I have spoken to Grindr Taylor Grindr and told them, yes, this came in way higher than we were expecting. They have agreed to sit down with us and Fleming should the board award this and look at areas that we could look at credits, DDo's, things that we could get. Somewhere to have we got the one hundred fifty thousand dollar credit back at Forest Hill Elementary for changing flooring, if the board remembers permitting that. So I'm happy to do that, and a building this small, we're not going to credit her way back a million dollars. So, long story short, that's how the fieldhouse bid came in. You have a, on the E meeting attached to the athletic fieldhouse, the very last, the very last attachment was just labeled fieldhouse. I tried to do a breakdown to give a real picture. I took the city funded projects out of this and just focused on our general fund and the funds that we're predicting we're going to get from the Sheldon County Commission. That gives us a revenue of seven million one hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. And then I put on the write inside expenditures, some of which were already spoken for. The Houston Middle School addition, the payment for the Riverdale project at two hundred nineteen thousand, the district office year one of twelve, three hundred seven thousand. Plus the fieldhouse year two of five, because we've made it that for five years as well, so that payment's being made separate. So that commits those funds, and once you're done with those commitments and you've taken it down, that leaves about three point four million dollars. Assuming the board approves this bid tonight, that'll take that number down to around two point four million dollars because we'll have to use funds to make up. I put the language from the agreement with the private donor at the bottom as it relates to this fieldhouse project. These were stipulations that were put in that we have to break ground on the athletic fieldhouse by August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. And then we have to commence on or before December fifteenth, the construction of the band addition, the auditorium renovation, upway, and the concession stand and paddock areas to commence immediately following completion of the band addition. So with roughly two point four, two point five million dollars left, I'm trying to paint the picture and be real transparent with the board. That with two point five million dollars left, that'll get the band addition and paddock done in a form of a phase one auditorium renovation project. And I think we're pretty close to half of capital funding, assuming we don't get any more from the Sheldon County Commission, what we're projecting.
But I'm optimistic, based on our communication, that we will be receiving additional funds for those previous two years that we had county commission capital dollars. I do want to clarify, this has been a challenging project from the start. If you remember, this was a four legs to a table. We had the city that was committed to putting in a million dollars over five years, so it was two hundred thousand dollars a year. We had the district that was also putting in that funding. We had Mr. Brunz, the private donor, who, very gracious, was putting in that funding for us. And we have the Athletic Foundation through ten-year commitments, so they went through a series of ten years, that they got individuals and people from the community to give donations. And they're also using their advertising for the future, when you see those things on the turf field, those banners and stuff, to pay for their portion of this project, they're putting in a million dollars. That just completes this fieldhouse. So I think what Mr. Kathy is also trying to explain, for all of this to happen, the board, and I do think this, that is my recommendation to do this, but to make this project happen. But know that the board is then the funding body for the band renovations, the improvements at the, for the auditorium, that, and the paddock area there. The fieldhouse takes up all the funding from all those other donors that, for us to finish this, we have to finish that through our capital dollars. The other option is if the board chooses not to do that, then this project essentially falls apart. We would have to give Mr. Brunz back his funding and the city back, they haven't given us money yet, but know that we wouldn't be, this project wouldn't happen because we wouldn't meet the stipulations in Mr. Brunz's document. So that's really the decision. I do believe this is the path. It is something needed for our students. I think the biggest challenge, and I know that I've spoken with all of the board members, is this may not have been the one that we have said was first. We have our capital improvements list, and there are other things, safety and security, other things that we would have done before that if we didn't have these stipulations in this contract. But it is something valuable that our students will use, that our community will use, but it does push us back for our other capital improvement projects for future years. So that's really the concern for this board. Typically, if I saw a bid day like this, I would say, we're sitting on this and we're going back to bid six months from now, a year from now. Like I said, the problem with this arrangement is that we don't have that opportunity. So know that that's the challenge for you, but I do think that Mr. Kathy, we had found a path to do this, but it does, if we don't receive those county dollars, push plans back another fiscal year.
I would say delay, even if we were able to delay it. Construction costs do not seem to be on down, they only seem to be going up. And the farther we push things, I'm concerned about Houston Middle School.
Yes.
The longer we wait to get, get a bid package together for that, the higher that cost is going to go. So I, you know, I, hmm, I do wonder, so we're, we're two years into our five-year commitment.
Yes, but the city has not.
Why has the city not given us?
The way their agreement was written, they gave the money the month after the loan is executed. The foundation has not executed the loan yet, so they, they are waiting on the loan to be executed and then their first payment comes the following month.
And we had, so it's all dominoes, and we had to wait till we went to bid and the board has to approve that bid before we can get the loan, so it's all tied together, but yeah.
And then too, is that when you're, because you don't have a lot of the donations in yet from the community, is that when you're waiting to, to?
So those start, like I said, those are smaller and start coming in over a ten-year period. The majority of this is paid for, that one loan from the foundation, from the Mr. Brunz and from the city and from our donation as a, as a district. But we do have the cash flow, we have the way to do that, that's what Mr. Kathy was trying to show with this document. It just pushes other projects that we would have prioritized higher to other fiscal years.
They are trying to push back projects that are in the school that will affect our students on a daily basis.
Agreed.
A lot of students.
It's against the athletic facility, but.
And I, and I think for us, we.
Look at it, there's, there's two million dollars of this that we're not.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So to not do it would be to lose two million dollars. That's what you're going to go, or go two million dollars or?
Three.
Twelve, three.
Three.
Yes. Other questions?
No, it sounds, I mean, you said that being off, so we'd rather, if we have to pick, we will.
Right.
And I think one of the things that I may recommend to this board, because I know Ms. Fisher and Ms. Langer, I know y'all are both board chairs, they're in different phases of this project. And we talked about the groups going out and requesting funds and starting this fundraising. It may be advisable for this board to create some policies that talk about actual amount of money raised before we start projects. So that may be something that I think would be wise for us to look into, because what it wound up doing was.
Turning our.
Turning around and we're getting it on the backside, so that may be something that we look at.
And percentage, well, and I think too, the community was supposed to raise a million and they raised.
The problem is there's a, and then we went out and did the rest. But yes, the problem is not necessarily the raising of it, it's, because you have promises, in a way, it's similar to a church.
Pledges.
Yes.
Things have changed since the last time we talked.
Yes, but you have, you have promises for money to be raised. I think we really, really seriously need to look at monies raised, not promises.
Cash in the bank?
Yes, cash in the bank.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Kathy? Item number twelve is modular classroom removal.
Modular classroom, we're going to spend a little time on this item as well. It's a, it's a big and forward decision and it's not an easy one. I'm sorry I bring you guys up to such decisions as easily. The, the modular classrooms, I want to bring board information so they can make an informed decision on this. So what we did was, we actually went out to bid to see what the cost would be to remove the modulars. And you've got a, you've got a kind of a breakdown of the costs. So I wanted you to see what it took to get them there. Seven hundred seventy nine thousand dollars was the amount of capital invested to install them. That's all the dirt work, plumbing, electrical, fire alarm, sprinkler, all, everything it took to get those in place. We actually have a bid number for the removal costs and the cost for the modular company to accommodate the modulars. That's a hundred one, one hundred thirty one thousand eight hundred ninety four dollars. And then we have the actual cost to purchase for mobile modular, which is seven hundred seventy six thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Now, the two things that are on the, on the agenda would be things that would require a board motion. So there's a motion to purchase and a motion, motion to remove. There is a third option available to the board, which is to lease them for another year. And if the board chose that, then the move would be, when you are approving the agenda, to take it off the agenda. Because it doesn't require, I don't think, a board action, we've been leasing them for four years when we approved it, we agreed, I think during the original approval, that it would go year to year. The, the, I feel like I'm living in the Twilight Zone a little bit, because four or five years ago, we was removing the modulars at all costs. When we started getting emails from some parents and the both principals at Farmington and Dogwood asking us, please don't remove the modulars. The, and the, we've looked at the enrollment numbers and we've looked at the projected enrollment. I do have a concern that we're going to be full day one at Dogwood and Farmington. But there's not going to be a lot of room for both of them to spread out, so that's a concern. I know the security has been expressed consistently as a concern with the modulars, so that's a concern leaving them. I guess what I would say is if, if the board, if the board views them as a viable long-term option and the principals are dedicated to programing them, so it's not regular classroom now there, it's mats or things of that nature. I think the correct move is to purchase them if the board is happy with it long-term versus leasing them for another year, because the lease money just goes away, there's nothing to be built. So if the board's, the board's view is that it's a good long-term solution, I think purchasing is the right option. If the board thinks that, no, we don't want them long-term, or removing them is a viable option, and the board says, I don't want to make this decision long-term right now, they can do is lease them for another year, so.
And I think the caveat, the challenge here is if you really think, so there's a safe way to play. You could lease them for one year and we could use them not for student instruction, it could be for occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, auxiliary services that we have in those classroom spaces, not dedicated classrooms. The challenge here, like Mr. Kathy said, is if the board is really leaning towards keeping them long-term, then that lease option, we would be losing that money, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It would be better just to go ahead and buy them outright because it's not a lease to own, it's not like it depreciates over the years. So that's really the challenge that you have before you right now, is we can get rid of them altogether and it would make it, if the demographer's right, we shouldn't be having issues in our, our schools. But if the demographer was wrong and we do see growth, it would cost us substantially to put them back in. Like Mr. Kathy, the reason he gave the install cost is it costs us almost eight hundred thousand dollars to put them back in. If you're leaning towards keeping them a year just to be safe, you could lease for a hundred and eighty thousand and then remove them at the end of this period just to see if there is, is growth, but. Get rid of them after that, but realize if the decision at the end of that period is to keep them, then essentially we didn't use, we didn't use that one eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty thousand wisely.
And the decision to remove it might not have the same price tag attached to it because we have to rebid it, and they were different.
I guess my question is then, if you're going to purchase them, where, do we have seven hundred seventy six thousand?
It would come from that budget I was just talking about, so the two point four, two point five then, if they have, if there was one to be left over, yeah, that's where it would come from. But that's, that holds true for the lease payments or the, or the removal as well.
I think my con, my concern is because I think there was a strong desire in the community to remove the portals. When we started the school district and that was the goal, we were going to remove portables. And so th, that's where I'm operating, from a security standpoint, I would love all the classrooms to be inside the building. If the portables were used for other things that were only.
We have a teacher escorting you to and from.
Right, then, then that might be palatable, but I think from a safety perspective, as a parent, I want all the classrooms in the building.
I couldn't approve it unless we were sure that all the classrooms were in the school.
My concern.
Maps, that, maps classrooms and go, take that back before, because you're not like that.
That's, that's going to be the issue, is if there's any growth, then what do you, portables? You have to have it out, you could put the maps out there.
And my frustration is, we just, we've just built this new building.
Yeah.
So if there is an overpopulation issue, it is not an issue of portables, it's an issue of zoning. And we need to go back to that table and fix it.
And.
And I hate that, but I'm just saying.
It's a question of zone.
But, but I will, we have looked at this, and you remember, we all went through this and built that zone in detail. It's, I would say yes and no. It's an issue of geography and the schools that we inherited, the fact that Farmington and Dogwood are so close to each other, and what is a press rate that divides the two between them? To have a completely balanced school population, remember when we were playing this game, you would be going all the way up to Houston Middle School on Johnson Road, pulling them past Dogwood to go to Forest Hill Irene. Or you'd be going so far on the west side of the city that you'd be going almost to the city limits to have a balanced school. So our geography is limiting to, to that someone.
But at some point, that's what we'll have to do.
Are we going to spend eight hundred thousand dollars, or do we need to look at our, look at our something?
Because we did donate over two hundred students from, from Dogwood and about a hundred fifty approximately from Riverdale and Farmington.
Yes.
And so we're snubbing.
So the, yeah, the concern that I have, and it may be an irrational concern, it may not be warranted, but ten classrooms in elementary school's capacity of around two hundred kids. So you take two hundred kids away, you take ten classrooms away, you just, you didn't create any additional capacity at the school, you just took portables away. That, that's, that's my concern, it could be, it could be the wrong concern, but it's a concern nonetheless, so. The principals expressed interest in having them, have had some parents, but you are correct, so it's in our master facilities plan, the elimination of portable classrooms is one of our goals. So that's where, on day one, so it is, it is.
If we approve leasing them for another year, I would only want to approve them to be used in absolutely needed situations. Where we had an overpopulation within the school and we realized that the only way we can accommodate those students in twenty nineteen, twenty, is to utilize those portables.
So my question then is, is that something the board can do?
I don't think so, but I, and that would be my.
That would be up to the principal.
I understand.
Actually, I think the superintendent. Tell the principals what he expects of them and they should follow up with that.
I think the, there's also a concern here too, there's only a certain limit to how safe and secure we can be and still operate school.
Right.
Mr. Kathy, I talk about this all the time, I think we forget about the fact that our kids go out and play on the playgrounds. And we have recess every single day outside. So the safety and security for me of a music class or something isn't, isn't as big a concern because if we have them moving as a class together. And I think the difference was, I laughed because we had a former, former board member who said, we messed up because we bought too nice a modular. They're nice, and the, the teachers like them and they, they have the restrooms that are nice inside those facilities, and so they can go to the restroom without having to go back to the main building.
One of the F A C, you know, there's a lot of people in certain generations that thought that modules and portables are the exact same thing, we're like, oh no.
It's a world of difference.
And we are removing the portables, yes, yes, those are regardless, regardless.
So, so minimally, for me, I, I think it is short sighted for us to, and we could completely remove the portables. We have the space to accommodate that, and Mr. Kathy has plans to make sure that we can accommodate those students. But we are putting complete faith in the demographer's plans of what's going to happen with our growth over the next few years. And so for us, I think minimally, I would recommend at least leasing them one more year, just to be sure that we don't see the growth. Because I would hate to pay a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and then at the end of next year have to invest eight hundred thousand to put them back in. So, and I do think at that time, if we saw something like that and we were having to look at that, there are other options besides completely rezoning if we've got geography.
If we're looking at numbers that, that they're having to use, then we need to go back to table. the table.
So other things that we can consider too, because I said, like, geography is really limiting in this city and, and I would hate to think, 'cause another one of our principals is neighborhood schools and making sure that people are able to walk to their school and moving someone who's, you know, all the way at Wolf River and Johnson, all the way to Forest Hill and driving past Dogwood and Farmington to get there. Other things we can look at too is you can add on simple classrooms to the main building itself. So there are other accommodations we could take, but I agree with you that if we saw something like that, um, it wouldn't be modulators forever. We would need to look at a permanent change to facilities or, uh, changing our zoning as we currently have it.
Personally would rather see us add on classrooms that are brick and mortar classrooms than purchase the modulators. And I think that will last longer term. Modulators are gonna deteriorate at a greater rate.
Yeah, I'd rather see us add a motion to this than, than to, to maybe add a motion that we would lease them for a hundred and eighty thousand for one more year.
We don't have to do that.
We don't have to do that.
We just roll with our current contract.
Or let's do that than the thing to do when Ms. Leder brings the motion to approve the, uh, agendas to remove them.
Or can we table it now or should we just remove it during the meeting?
Decisions during the working session.
Yeah, so we would have to wait till y'all get together to see if they wanna table them.
But to, to your point, we may go in with zoning, but it's, uh, school zones are living things, isn't it?
Right, they are.
They're not static.
Right.
Um, but I never saw this coming.
Okay, we need to move to number thirteen.
Yep.
Amendment to option and land lease agreement with Tower Ventures.
So you have an attached to the agenda, this is amendment to the, uh, option to land lease agreement with Tower Ventures. Uh, this proposed amendment to the existing contract with Tower Ventures, uh, defines the proposed location change. Uh, the location change is agreeable with Tower Venture. Uh, this location does the tower over Dogwood Park, but it is still legally on our property in this proposed amendment. Um, under this new proposed location, the cell tower will be two hundred fifty-three feet from Dogwood Elementary School's building, uh, from the furthest corner and three hundred sixty-four feet from the newly constructed building on Dogwood. Uh, procedurally, as far as what this will look like tonight, and I'll repeat this during the business session, um, if the board chooses to vote no on this amendment that's being presented tonight, in the original contract with the main effect, with the original location of the tower, uh, a hundred forty-eight feet from the building, uh, the original location of the tower has already been approved by the Board of Zoning and Appeals, the Planning Commission, and the Design Review Commission, uh, so that would mean that it would only have to go to the Board of Mayor and All in for final approval. Uh, should the board choose to vote yes on this amendment being presented tonight, then the new location and, uh, we'd have to go back to the Planning Commission, the Design Review Commission, and then the Board of Mayor and All in will be, be final approval in the morning. I'll be happy to answer any questions about it.
Yes, very clear. I'm not moving in the center of my mind, which is like.
Correct.
Yes.
That is what's before us tonight.
And I'll clarify, just what Mr. Kathy said again. Voting for this amendment actually slows down the process of the cell tower being built because it has to go back through the commissions. Uh, if this board chooses not to vote for that, then it streamlines it directly to the BMA's decision for a final vote for, um, this project.
Correct. Okay. And number fourteen is project development contract number twelve twenty-eight for Dogwood Elementary School.
Um, I think if we, um, and I, I would recommend that when the, when this comes up for the business agenda, that this, uh, assuming, uh, there is approval to be, then it be removed from the agenda, there's a language that needs to be changed, uh, in the, in the project development contract. So it could be voted on in the event of a no vote, in the event of a yes vote, I would recommend a move of this agenda.
Okay.
If there is a yes vote, how would that work? Would we just?
We would.
He would remove it.
It would be removed from the, it would be removed from.
He would suggest removing it from the agenda and we would vote on that. At that point, to remove it from the agenda.
So if it's a, if it's, then if they're gonna say yes.
Yeah, so if, so to clarify, so if the board voted to move the tower, that would change the location in the current contract. So then this agreement for the construction of it would have to go back, uh, to be reapproved, approved by the city because they would have to redefine the language.
And the language in the project development contracts has just been through the Planning Commission, the Design Review Commission approval process if the contract is amended, having been through that process, so we would need to table this one.
Thank you. Any further business? Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
You should go back and determine whether we have the, the, the agenda amendments as we leave, so you're going to page number eight and take number twelve.
No, the, we cannot, uh, they cannot decide on number twelve yet because we don't.
We can't do it until we are in session.
Even though we gathered that their will is to, to lease that, uh, they have to wait till.
Right. Till we're in session.
Okay, then we gotta.
Any further business? Hearing none, we stand adjourned until the business meeting.
Oh. Yeah. Just down to the man with the desk. Check, is it Rebecca's? Five. No, this is mine. Just hold on to it. Did you check it? You're going to miss you so much, Israel. I just can't see. You know that these are. I'm sorry about that. I'm trying to get in touch with the frame.
This meeting of the Germantown Municipal School Board District is now in order. School District Board Meeting, I can say that. Let us open with a moment of silence. Let us stand to pledge allegiance. Our superintendent will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have before you the board agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion has been made by Ms. Betsy Landers and seconded by Amy Oof. Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Chairman Newton?
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we move to recognition and awards, I want to, um, encourage those who are here, for citizens to be heard, to take a moment to fill out the piece of paper about citizens to be heard. That can be found just outside the doors to the left on the table where you signed in. Um, if you would get that and fill it out and turn it in to the board secretary, Ms. Subramani, who is seated just here, um, then we will get to that when we get to the point in the meeting when we have citizens to be heard. At this time, we go to recognition and awards.
Um, I always stand in an awkward position. I feel like I have to address both parties and I apologize for that, um, because what I'm about to say is probably the most important thing in human resources that we can cover and it deals with teacher tenure. Um, and before I do that, I do wanna thank everybody for showing up tonight because when you look around from a broad-based perspective, this community is really, really wonderful from the standpoint that you advocate for children and you advocate, advocate for each other in spite of different opinions and what, and what the various issues that may be as we are a emerging school district, getting ready to become an established school district. So I did wanna thank people along the way for coming out tonight, uh, but more importantly, I think there's a sub-cohort that I call, um, simply the school principal. And I've, I've been doing this for twenty-nine years and I am embarrassed that in my five years, I did not think that I appreciated nor told these principals in a public forum a simple thank you. Um, that job that they do, if you haven't been there, is an extremely important job. At times, it can be an overwhelming job to balance all the, all the demands of a, of a daily scope of work type of day. Um, so for these principals, Ms. Price, if you would stand, if she's here, I think I saw her. Mr. Perkowski, if you would please stand. Mr. Bond, if you would please stand at Riverdale. Ms. Diaz from Houston Middle School. And my bias, uh, because I was a former high school principal, goes, goes to Mr. Taylor at Houston High School as well. With that, they know their staff the best. So for the general public that's here or those people that are listening out in the community, how does someone get tenure? Um, tenure is a, is, is a, an established benefit, if you will, for someone that has been with us for five years. And during those five years, the last two years, they have performed at a, at above expectation or at above, above expectation. We call that. they have performed at above expectation, or above above expectation. We call that a level four, a level five. If someone came over from another school system from within the state and they've had years of experience, we put them on a two-year probationary period. So there are some people that have been in this for 20, 25 years that have come over that are getting tenure with us because they've passed those two years, that probationary period. I do want to thank the other voice behind all this. And I, one, my wife is not here. I'd like to thank her because she always puts me in place, like a good wife would do. Sometimes she simply says, are you here physically and mentally with me at this dinner table? Or is your mind somewhere else? And a lot of times, if you're a teacher, your mind is somewhere else. You're thinking about the paper you got to grade, or the kid that you didn't reach, or the parent that you want to contact, or the administrator that has some clarity of focus issues. It doesn't go away. So for those spouses, or for those parents, or for those grandparents that are married or understand the background of a school teacher, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. You can hear me now?
Yeah.
So sometimes it works if you just unplug it, unplug it, and I don't know. I think John Pierce taught me that, always first thing you do, right? Tonight, I have four amazing teachers to recognize from...
Go ahead, keep going.
Dogwood Elementary School. These four ladies represent a lot of the foundation of what goes on at Dogwood Elementary School, and I can't say enough about them. Our first one is going to be Laura Allen. Laura teaches first grade. She's been a pillar of a leader in our school. Yep, come on up. In our school, she puts her arm around new teachers. She takes care of her grade level unbelievably. And there's another teacher here on her grade level. And my favorite thing about this grade level is I made everybody come up with a tagline for their grade level to just kind of help us have that positive attitude. And first grade's tagline, I now have adopted it. It is just make it work. So whatever I tell her, like whatever it is, she's like, no problem, we'll make it work. So thank you for that, Laura.
And congratulations.
Try to catch her. Come on over here.
Can I sit now?
Yes.
Our next teacher up is Natasha Britt Clift, or Tasha Britt Clift. Come on up. Tasha is also a first grade teacher at Dogwood Elementary School, and the two of them are pretty thick as thieves. Tasha has also stepped up and taken many leadership positions in our school. One of them this year was working with our Blue Chips, which are some of our new teachers, and helping them make sure they have all their questions answered and just being a good friend and being there for them. Tasha also does just a great job meeting students where their needs are, and I can't say enough about the amazing things she's done this year with her class. So congratulations. Thank you. Okay, our next teacher, real foundation teacher right here, Ms. Ellen Moke. Teaches kindergarten at Dogwood Elementary School. Once again, leadership, leadership, leadership. Ellen has represented us across the state. She has gone and been a trainer, been trained, and trained a lot of people here within our district for the math standards and for lots of other things. Ellen has, you've had a really good year this year. In the past, she had some challenges, but I think this year, it's been really good for you. Ellen is spectacular teaching either reading or math, but she definitely rocks out the math. Thank you. And finally, Ms. Carla Shirts. Ms. Carla Shirts, I stole her from Lakeland. Ms. Shirts and I worked together at Lakeland Elementary School back, I don't want to talk about back when, back when. And Ms. Shirts is one of our second grade teachers, and she has been absolutely a positive impact on us getting just data-minded teachers at Dogwood Elementary School. And so there's a lot of people that probably don't love us as a team, but at the same time, I think they've come a long way, understanding, we don't have to overuse data, but it definitely helps drive instruction and making sure that we're teaching our students exactly what they need and not too much and not little. So Carla, again, has taken on major leadership positions in the school, one being on the data committee. She's also our Title I Coordinator, and she has various other things that she does. But thank you so much, Carla. Thank you very much.
All right. So Farmington Elementary, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight teachers on this list. And a lot of them started the same year that I started at Farmington. So it's a very special group in my eyes. We've been in this together for the past now six years. And I feel like they all have something very special to offer, but I want to make sure that they understand one thing. Tenure, really, the only guarantee you have is a due process hearing. It doesn't get you out of doing things that you shouldn't do. So continue, continue to work in the manner that you've worked that led you to this point, and you'll be fine. You won't even need the tenure to do anything. Is that not right? Okay. Just trying to keep us all in the straight and narrow. So I will start with Ms. Courtney Bergeren. She's one of our first grade teachers. And I think she definitely brings a dynamic approach to the classroom, and I know her students love her. And we appreciate all of the things she does in the classroom and outside of the classroom. She's a great benefit to our school. The next one is Ms. Emily Deaton. She, actually, I hired her in the middle of my first year at Farmington. So she made a leap to us from a Shelby County school, and I think it has paid great dividends. I've enjoyed seeing her grow into one of our instructional leaders in the building, and I appreciate, again, all of her hard work. And next, we have Jennifer Harlan. She teaches our gifted and talented students. And she's done a wonderful job of bringing a program to us that really lets our students grow and find out who they are as learners, and I definitely appreciate her bringing a fresh approach to the gifted program in GMSD. Next, we have Mr. Jonathan House. And I'm not sure how he does it. I think it's him, Officer Magipinto, myself, and the plant manager are the only males in the building. So he definitely has a balancing act to perform in that he is married with children, so he knows how to make a relationship work. But I think he's gone above and beyond to make sure that he's been accepted into our strongly female faculty. But I think he also, we have to touch base every once in a while just to make sure we're on the same page and that we're still functioning as the male contingent in our building. So it takes a lot of work, but we've made it work. And up next, we have Ms. Dana Lane. And she's one of the ones that started at Farmington with me. And she's brought a wealth of knowledge to our school. She had a career in politics before this, so this was probably quite a change for her. But she has become, again, one of our strongest instructional leaders in the school and is a wonderful math teacher that's taught several grade levels, but right now, she's in fifth grade. But I do appreciate all of the calming influence that Ms. Lane has brought to our faculty. And next, we have Ms. Sarah Beth Lucas. She's one of our second grade teachers, who, again, has been there with me from the beginning. And she, again, brings that level of calmness to her grade level and to our school, and always has a level-headed approach, and really helps her students to grow throughout the year. So I appreciate that. Next, we have Ms. Jennifer Mock. She is our librarian. And I never met the previous librarian at Farmington, but after the first year, some of the teachers that had been there for a while and some of the students who were older students, they could not believe that the library could be fun and that it was a place that you wanted to go and was not a punishment. And I really appreciate the level of precision that Ms. Mock goes about her job with. She's really transformed our library, and I think our students are so much better for it. So I do appreciate that, Ms. Mock. And last but not least, promise it's alphabetical, Ms. Rachel Sparks, one of our second grade teachers. She has experienced, like Mr. Haddow was talking about, from outside of the district. So I really appreciated her coming in with some ideas that maybe even people in this part of the state of Tennessee were not really familiar with. And I feel like she kind of jump-started a lot of the things that we did to kind of improve our instruction within Farmington. So I do appreciate her coming with fresh ideas and being a valuable working member of our second grade team.
I just give what I'm handed. There you go. For Riverdale School, I would like to call forward Ms. Myrick, Ms. Melissa Myrick. Ms. Myrick has been a valuable addition to our first grade team years ago. Those of you that know Riverdale know that, well, as a Raider, you know we like to keep it in the family. Once a Raider, always a Raider. And Ms. Myrick joined us, kids at Riverdale, and now your third is in middle school at Riverdale. But such a, oh, and she looks at me. Yes, I see you. Such a great, great teacher, very patient, and a steadying influence in our first grade that has seen some changes over the years, but has been that rock and steady influence in our first grade, and we greatly appreciate you.
Hello, everybody. All right, I have three awesome teachers to introduce to you tonight. At Houston Middle School, we are all about academic rigor and the social-emotional development of children. And these three teachers are so awesome. It's amazing. I'm going to start with Hillary Higgins-Botham. She goes by Ms. H, in case you're wondering, who is that? She is my art teacher. She's my art, that's better. I don't understand what it means. She's my fabulous art teacher. And if any of you came to Days of Diversity and saw the talented young artists that we have, and that's because of hats off to Ms. H. I always say, what's more important, great teaching or great learning? That's one of our interview questions. That's a trick question. Lots of philosophical answers to that. But for her, our great learners happen because of the great teaching that Ms. H does. So congratulations. All right, next I have, I forgot my glasses, Jordan McLaughlin. Jordan is my wonderful math teacher. She started out teaching social studies, and she came to me, was it last year or the year before, and said, Ms. Diaz, I have a math brain. Can you make that happen for me? I live in the math world. I don't know how I ended up in social studies, low man, I'm a totapole. And I said, oh, my gosh, yes, I can get you in a math position. And oh, my, oh, my, oh, my, I'm speechless. That math side of my brain, I thought existed until I met this young lady. No. You are amazing. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for all you do. And last but not least, is Ms. Tally. Danielle Tally. And she is my amazing American history, social studies teacher, and current events. I sat in her classroom to do a walkthrough the other day, well, not the other day, don't listen to that, about a month ago. And it made me want to be a student. What she was teaching with that current event class was amazing. I mean, it would blow your mind away. I mean, hats off, Ms. Tally. Congratulations. Thank you.
I hope I don't blow you away. I'm usually not used to these things. I usually talk pretty loud. I have seven teachers who are receiving tenure tonight. First off is Monty Crosby. She teaches English for us at the high school, and she came in before me, and she was just telling me she was headed for trips overseas to go see things that she can bring into the classroom, and she's always trying to help the kids do those types of things. She also... She also... She lets me know when I mess up. She sends me emails and says, "I think you meant to do this." And so, I make those arrangements and fix the emails that I send. But thank you, Ms. Crosby. Ms. Fisher, I don't... Didn't... Oh, there she is. Good. I didn't see her. Ms. Fisher is our intervention counselor at Houston. She does a great job with the kids. If they have any type of problems, they come see her first, and she does a great job of making sure things are handled in the proper manner. She lets us know if there's something we need to get involved with, and she does a great job out of the guidance department there at Houston. Next, I have Elizabeth Flexdauer. Ms. Flex, as the kids call her, because they get confused and they start saying all of her name. But she does algebra at Houston, and she works through... She comes in in the mornings, helps the kids, trying to get them to understand the basics, and then she goes through class, and sometimes she has to stay afterwards, and we appreciate the time you put in to help the kids. Thank you. We have Valerie McKinney. There she is. Ms. McKinney, she's also somebody that keeps me in line. She helps me out with things that are going on in the school. She goes and does whatever I need her to do. She's very involved in the school. She has students, daughters at the school, three. Well, yeah, we got rid of one of them, but we're good. So, but she does a great job of letting us know what's happening in the school. She will go and help the kids do whatever they need to do outside of school. If there's somebody who needs to go and monitor what's happening at an event, she's there. So, she's very involved, and we thank you for that. All right, next, we have James Thomas. Coach Thomas is the football coach at Houston. He also teaches wellness, and I've known him basically forever. I actually coached him when he was playing at Houston, and he came back to help us with the football program. He does whatever we need him to do as far as athletically. If we have... We need kids to move books, we go see him, and he gets them to move the books. So, he does a great job with the kids, and thank you very much, sir. Yes, I did. His better half is next. They have Margaret on here, but I know her as Haley Thomas. She's also been there since I was there. What year did you graduate?
'01.
Yeah, aging her. And she's been there. She helps... She keeps him in line, which keeps him out of my office, so that's a good thing. So... And she works with our exceptional children. The next one is Brian Wright. I don't know. I didn't... Nope, he did not make it tonight. So, thank you all very much.
So, if it is okay with the board chair, we would like to take a five-minute break to get some cake in the lobby to recognize them, and then we will reconvene after we recognize our teacher who've received tenure.
First, I want to say congratulations to all the teachers that received tenure. And yes, we will take a five-minute break in the lobby to celebrate.
Thank you. And we are also being requested, do not leave until we get a big group picture of all the teachers who have received tenure. Not enough pictures.
This meeting of the Germantown Municipal School Board is back in session, and we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is reports with our TLN update. Ms. Griffiths.
Thank you. Much to our board and districts' dismay, this spring, the Tennessee 111th General Assembly passed House Bill 939 and Senate Bill 795, following a conference committee report allowing for education savings accounts to be given to students only of Shelby and Davidson Counties. The House vote was passed with some controversy, and the governor, who originally promoted this legislation, has yet to sign it, but we anticipate that he will. GMSD and the Germantown Board of Education will continue to outwardly express our opposition to this legislation as litigation against it could be presented. House Bill 1158, which allows for any LEA to establish a threat assessment team within their district, this bill which promotes increased school safety, passed... their district, this bill, which promotes increased school safety, passed unanimously in both chambers. I am proud that G M S D, in collaboration with our city and police department, are already doing many of the things that these threat assessment teams are intended to do. That's our legislative update.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. The chairman's report is that it is the end of the school year, which means that there are a lot of end-of-the-school-year events and activities, to which many of our board members have been invited, and we have gone to as many of those as we could and enjoyed them immensely. A few of the things that we have been doing are attending the formation of the Forest Hill Elementary School P T O and the reveal of the mascot, attending band concerts, orchestra concerts, choir concerts, being part of the Riverdale 50th Anniversary Committee meetings, attending the Germantown Financial Advisory Commission meeting, community conversations lunch hosted by the mayor, Houston Middle School Days of Diversity, Dogwood Elementary Field Day, Germantown Board of Mayor and Alderman Meeting, and Dogwood Elementary Gifted Expo, as well as all of us being a part of the Houston High School graduation, which was a wonderful time together to celebrate these young people, and as we saw them stand, all of those who had received scholarships, it was exciting, inspiring, and gave hope for our future, and said a lot about our school system. So that is the chairman's report. Mr. Jones with the financial report.
Okay, you have the financial reports for the month ending April 30, 2019. First, on the balance sheet in the school operating fund, we have total assets liabilities and fund balance reported at 28.1 million. In the federal projects fund, we have an amount due from the Tennessee Department of Education at 283,000. Total assets liabilities and fund balance for the remaining funds are, in the cafeteria fund, 314,000, capital projects, 2.2 million, the health insurance fund at 2.3 million, O P E B Trust, 2.9 million, and in the general fixed asset account group, our total plant property and equipment is at 89.1 million. Just a couple of comments on the statement of revenues and expenditures in the school operating fund. Sales tax revenues are on target to reach approximately 7 million for the year. The target percentages for expenditures in administrative or support categories, 83 percent, instructional, 75 percent, and we're currently at 64 percent of the total budgeted. In the health insurance fund, despite high claims in August and February, the health insurance fund still has reserves of 1.9 million. The cafeteria fund, April was a record sales month at 187,000. Air marks net income totals approximately 132,000. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Manuel, superintendent's report.
I'm going to try to do in about five minutes what we spent three hours on for our board retreat, so please bear with me if I'm moving quickly. But I do want to stress the fact that I grew up here in Germantown. These are my schools. It's where I went to school. It's where my children go into school. I couldn't be prouder of the success that we are seeing in our schools, and it is a joined effort of our teachers, our staff, our cabinet-level administration, our parents working with our students at home. We are seeing incredible success, and we are continuing to set the bar for the state. But we're going to look at some of those metrics from our current strategic plan, just to give an update on where we are as a district. There is a U R L, if you go back there. You can see all this online, if you want to spend time going through all the data, to look at these metrics for success, but know that this will be posted on our website. So, goal number one is maximize student potential, and we have several objectives that we talk about. There's an academic component, and we're talking about differentiating the needs of students, and really teaching towards their learning styles. There's an extracurricular opportunity, when we're looking at fine arts, or athletics, or opportunities for children outside of the classroom. And then there's also the fact that we want to raise citizens, people who are going to care about our community and the broader community, and that's why we have civic service as a built-in component to our school system. So we're going to look at those objectives and some metrics to really show how we are achieving those. So know that on the A C T, if you have over a 21 composite on the A C T, that means you are career and college-ready, and they predict that you're going to make at least a C or better in your college courses. So know that when we started with our first strategic plan in 2015, 2016, our baseline data was that 74 percent of our students were scoring over a 21 on the A C T. In the past four years, what we have seen is a dramatic increase. And know that when you see like .2 percent statistically, that's a significant change. And for us to see these types of numbers means that we're seeing an increase in the rigor and what our students are really exposed to. So it's gone to an 80.5, to an 83.1, and now to an 85.6, and our goal was 80.4 for our students who are scoring over a 21 on the A C T. An incredible accomplishment, because this truly is a measure for all of our teachers across all grade levels, because it's a cumulative measure of how much they've learned throughout their schooling. Another metric that we can use is the A C T average. So when we have students who are scoring really high, because there's a 30-plus club at the high school of students who are scoring over a 30 on the A C T, and they keep charting numbers, over 200 students who are in that 30-plus club, but our A C T average now is a 25.9. And once again, if you score over 21, that means that you receive the Hope Scholarship in the state of Tennessee. So that's an incredible accomplishment, when you look at, we've gone from a 24.1 to a 25.9 just in the past four years. Incredible data to support what we're doing in the district. But there's even a more rigorous component that we use around A C T. There are four parts to the A C T test, whether you're talking about the science, the social studies section, the reading, or the math section. Know that students sometimes are stronger in one area than another. So maybe math is not their strongest, but they'll have language arts, and they'll score really high, and that'll balance out. But we want to look at all four metrics to see how they're performing. So how many students are hitting over that 21 or that 22 on all four metrics of the A C T? When we started four years ago as a district, 44 percent of our students were scoring over the guidelines in all four areas. This past year, we hit 60.5 percent of our students that are balanced across all subject areas, not just strong in math, not just strong in English, they are good at all of those areas. Know that the state average this past year was 19 percent. So we are setting the bar, we are doing good work around rigor, and there's not a silver bullet. When people talk about, what is it, and we talked about this at the board meeting, is it tutoring, is it one specific class? It's not. It's exposure to rigorous coursework throughout your entire academic career. That's why we're seeing these numbers. The students are challenged each and every single day while they're in school. So other measures that we use are the state test, and so know that this is cumulative in grades three through eight. Now, we do have Tennessee Ready across three through 12, but this metric was for three through eight. So know that E L A, you can see how we've gone up from 61.3 to 62.7, and math, we've gone from a 66 percent proficient in advanced to a 68.6. So we truly are seeing growth across all grade levels. We also have a literacy component, and so know that we've changed this metric a little bit because the tests changed. So when they are in kindergarten and first grade, there's a star early literacy, which is different from the star A R assessment that they take too, which is different from the Tennessee Ready, so it's hard to compare the different tests to each other, but we are trying to track cohorts as they're moving through the grade levels. So know that with the class of 2031, our current kindergartners, they weren't in school last year, so we don't have test data for them, but when they started the beginning of the school year, 34.5 percent of them were walking in the door, reading at a kindergarten level. What have our teachers done with those students, and how have they've grown them? It's grown to 88.4 percent of our students with this last test that are reading on or at grade level for the kindergartners. Now, we take the class of 2030, which is our current first graders, when they were in kindergarten, at the end of their kindergarten year, they were scoring a 90.1. Now, we do see what we call the summer slide, and so know that there is some regression over the summer, but we're giving them a test within the first couple of weeks of school. Usually after three or four weeks, they start catching back up to where they were. But know that when we gave that first test for early literacy, 72.3 percent were proficient in advanced or reading at grade level, and at the end of the year, it was 91.9. So we're tracking and measuring data across grade levels to make sure we're seeing the growth that we expect. And then also, last year was an incredible year. Know that this was the first time that we've had all four of our K through eight schools recognized as reward schools, and a lot of districts across the state may, and huge, large districts, may have one or two reward schools, but for us, all four of our K through eight schools are recognized as reward, and that means you have to have growth of students, but also high levels of achievement. So that's a rigorous component for us, and know that we were excited that all of our schools experienced this, and we tried to do a good job of promoting to our community how special this was with the surprises when we covered them out in front of the school. I don't know if you remember, we hid them under garbage bags, and then we brought them out and had a big reveal, because we want our students to know how important this is to us. Know too, that this metric, for me, isn't as powerful, because I don't think the community understands it as well. Any student who enrolls in, at Houston High School anytime during the four years, if we cannot provide documentation of where they travel to, so they may go to an international school, they may go to somewhere else in the state, if we can't get the right documentation, they count against us. Special needs students who are also graduating with a special diploma count against us. So we think about some of those students that are in our functional skills classes count against these cohort numbers. I was talking to the counselor this past year, and I think she said there was one student who actually didn't graduate in the class and may have to go to summer school for that program, so it's a little bit skewed. So that's not as strong a metric for us, but know that we are seeing a 94.3 percent graduation rate, according to the state. Then also, we have a focus on student data and student achievement. We are making sure that all of our schools are tracking the progress of our students, and we are setting short- and long-term goals for them. We have skill deficits. Know that we're using lots of different metrics to measure these goals. When we look at our students in the area two, it doesn't matter what level you're coming in at, we're going to provide services for you. So know that one of the things that we are adding this next year are more typical peers for our students in our preschool programs. It is required by the state for us to have as much mainstreaming as possible for those students, so know that we are seeing an increase in our positive peers and our employees' children at Forest Hill Elementary School to provide a truly blended program for those students at those schools. Other components of our strategic plan are that civic service component. There are extensive lists at all of our schools of ways that they are giving back to the community, so we're just highlighting a couple. Know that Houston High School, for example, did over 8,200 hours of service hours completed across all different clubs and organizations. But one we brought out was the shoes for funds to org, and what they do is, based on the poundage of shoes that you bring in, used shoes, they use those, they will give a donation to a charity. So at Houston High School, they use that to fund St. Jude. And also for us, and I learned how difficult it is to wear a dolphin costume, it is hot, and that helmet is heavy, but know that we did have over 365 students participate in that St. Jude run, and it was a combination of Miss Crowder, and there were teams at each of our schools that really promoted this. So know that we raised over 21,000 across the district from all of our schools for St. Jude, because we want to teach our children that they're given blessings, they are gifted, they are talented, but they have to use them to better our community. Dogwood Elementary School, when we talk about mentorship, and we have mentoring programs at all of our schools, know that they have been experimenting with cohorts of students that they're providing mentors for in their schools, and they're looking at expanding this next year so that all students have a mentor besides the teacher that's in their classroom to really work with them and meet those students' needs. Because I think the most important thing that we can impart with students is not how did you score on a test, but that we care about you as a person, we care about you as a child, and that you have an adult there, that if you're having an issue, you can talk to them. That's their goal, and so I'd like to thank Dogwood for expanding that to all of their students next year during their club schedule, and we'll give you updates on how that program grows. We also have objectives for recruiting, developing, and retaining exemplary staff. So we have six objectives, I won't read them all, but they're about recruiting, developing, and retaining exemplary staff. Know too, that I've heard different comments from the community, and I'm getting it from both sides, and so I asked our H R department to do some research from people internally, I've heard them say, "They always hire people outside for leadership positions in the district." And from people externally, I always hear, "They always hire people from the inside for positions in the district." So know that they have done an analysis of those leadership positions in the district, and since our first year of the district, we've hired 18 people externally for leadership positions and 16 people internally. So that's why I'm hearing it from both sides, because it really is balanced. And so if, depending on which side of the coin you are, on whether you wanted a position or not, I think that's where you were concerned that we hired too many of one or the other. But no, our goal is to hire the best people for all positions in the district, regardless of whether it's a leadership, or it's a teacher in the classroom, and we are putting those plans in place to hire the best. So one of the ways we do that is our application software. We are using a frontline software that has a national reach. It actually posts onto the national job sites, so we're having teachers and leaders from New York, from California, from Texas, who are seeing our postings, and they're applying for our jobs and coming and interviewing with us. So know that we are excited that we are going to continue to recruit the best to Germantown schools. And of course, you missed that last one there, but we do have four years in a row of being a top workplace. Our employees are happy to work here. So how many people have applied for the most recent positions that we posted? We had over 41 applicants for an assistant principal position at Riverdale. We had 451 applicants for 21 teaching positions, 56 for support staff, one for a very specialized maintenance position, that was H V A C and electrical, we had over 10 applicants, and we had over 32 applicants for a technology position. So we are, feel comfortable that we're doing those steps to get quality people in place, but we won't stop there. We want the best pool for all of our leaders to choose from, to bring people. And we also have a plan to develop them, so we presented on the Blue Chips program in the past. We have a five-year training program, so those teachers that you saw tonight that were getting recognized for tenure, they've been through a Blue Chip program to train them in everything G M S D, talk about communication, talk about data, we're growing our staff through the district. We've also expanded our flexible P D. Know that teachers have to receive professional development, and so we've expanded this program, and we embedded it into our calendar. Teachers can come to school on those days and receive professional development there, but they can go to really special conferences outside of the state nationally to receive training, and they get P D P points, so they can use that for their licensure advancement. But know that we created some infographics to explain the changes to our community around Flex P D. How do the teachers and the staff feel that we're doing? The state does an anonymous survey, and so just, we've just got the results back. Over 96 percent of our teachers agree that they are satisfied with being a teacher in their schools, and 87 percent of teachers agree there's an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect. And realize, they do this right before the state testing, which I always think is a problem. If we did this the first couple of weeks of school, I bet it'd be a lot better, but we do it right in March, when it's probably one of the most stressful times for teachers. But we are excited because they are happy to be here. And then, more importantly, we talk about, why do people want to work in G M S D? It's because we care about them, it's because we're a family. Know that we do things, and it's about the pay, it's about the benefits, but it's those little things that our staff does, our human resources do, our principals and assistant principals do, to tell them that we care about them. So whether it's a golden egg, Easter egg hunt in the school, and somebody gets to win a breakfast if they find a hidden egg in their clues, or whether it's a game show where we actually give away prizes at the beginning of the school year to kick off the school year, and that teacher just stuck her hand in a jar of mayonnaise. Know that we are doing things to really celebrate them and let them know that we care about them, but also the little things that H R does as far as notes or emails to tell them that when we see them doing something good, we want to recognize that and share that with the community. We talk about leadership positions. Another reason that you would want to work in G M S D, we provide positions for those teachers in the classroom, that if they want to take a greater leadership position, they can be a data lead, or they can be a Blue Chip mentor, they can do things to help improve their school and receive extra funding and payment for stepping into those positions. So you can see Mr. Robinson there with Senator Kelsey, and he is one of our Blue Chip, or he's one of our lead teachers. Also too, and this is even more incredible, but it's an extrinsic factor, we have had five years, because we're self-insured with health insurance, that we haven't seen an increase in our benefits. And we talk about teachers being on limited salaries and limited pay, and think about what you've probably experienced with your workplaces and your health insurance. For us to maintain that same level of health insurance cost to our employees is really important, and it comes through education and making sure that we know about generic drugs, and when you should go to the E R and when you shouldn't. If you've got a fever, maybe that's not the best place. Know that we're all keeping the costs low, but it's a benefit to our employees. And then finally, we've just switched to a plan to manage our prescription drugs, which is one of our highest areas of claim for health insurance, and we're already in the first quarter seeing huge savings that are going to go directly back to the employees. Third is mobilizing the community, and know that we spend a And know that we spend a lot of time, whether it's information, and I hope that y'all have seen this as a community, on our website, when we have the superintendent's report that lists all the information and data about why did we have to grant some transfers, why did we not, what's happening with Forest Hill. We try to do a lot of activities to really engage the parents and keep you informed about what's happening. So know that across all mediums, whether it's Facebook, or Twitter, or Schoology, that we're seeing increases in the number of people who are using our platforms, and we're seeing a dramatic impact, because that's how people are using social media. So one example of the way that we engage the community is we had two strategic plan town hall meetings, where we wanted people to give us initial feedback on our current strategic plans. But we have tours for our BMA, our leadership in the community, to talk about what we're doing with the funding that we're receiving from them. So an example was last year, we gave a tour to all of our elected officials to see how we'd use the $500,000 for security. And so we had used them for cameras, we used them for secure entrances. So know that we do those regular tours for the community to see that. And you can see the bottom picture, which is the tour of Forest Hill Elementary School. Also too, if you have not been on the tour to Houston High School, I highly recommend it. You really don't understand how incredible it is for all students there. So every February we do this, we show you every program that students can participate in, and the students take you on a tour and tell you about the great things that they do, and you realize, it is not like when I went to high school, or you went to high school. It is an incredible opportunity for all of our kids in Germantown. We are also partnering with business leaders across the area. Know that we have a health science group that is looking for ways that we can work with business professionals in the community to expand opportunities for our students. We're working with the National Association of Home Builders and with the governor to increase those skilled trades in the area. And then more recently, we're working with car dealerships in the area and More Tech to provide students training so that they can come out working, and they are saying if we can produce 200 students who have these skills, they would hire all of them. And they're starting at 70, 80,000, could make over six figures, because they cannot find these skilled trades anymore. So know that we're working with our business partners to train our students for real-world jobs and opportunities. And then of course, in the upper right-hand corner, we did have the Mustang Cafe. Our special needs students do run a restaurant that we invite community members into, so that they're learning skills and they can see meaningful employment when they leave Houston High School. So no matter where you are, we're providing an opportunity for students in Germantown schools. We are also actively working with the media, so you can see there that we did a public service announcement on anonymous alerts, trying to teach our kids and our families about how to report things that may be a concern or a danger to our families. Hopefully y'all have seen some information coming on anonymous alerts. And we also have seen a dramatic increase in the number of students who are vaping or using electronic cigarettes. We cannot solve this without parents, with the community, without the media. You would not even recognize the jewel pods, they look like a USB. We have to educate our parents on this, because we've seen an increase from 2% to about 11%, and we're seeing that from CDC surveys. So know, we are trying to be proactive with the media, with the community, with our parents to inform them about this concern for us in our schools and in our community, and we will continue to do that. Know, we have also spent a lot of time, and I thank our Student Services Department, for working with GeoCoding and ArcGIS to really figure out where our students are living and their addresses, and how they're impacted by the new school zones. And then, we took that information and tried to make it into something usable and friendly for our community, so they could understand those hard and difficult decisions that we were having to make around zoning. And so we spent a lot of time making infographics or picturals that can explain all those details that Student Services has really worked on. And then, this is the good part. Once we had families that were zoned to the new school, we wanted them to know how incredible it is going to be. And so we really started a campaign to talk about, when we had the mascot reveal on Sunday, to let them know about all the design features that are going to be special, the staff that is going to be there. So know, we had pep rallies at all of our schools to promote a Forest Hill, and we started mobilizing our community members, our parents, so that they could develop our new PTOs. And of course, we ended with the mascot reveal, which was yesterday, an incredible day, where everyone was excited about what's going to happen next year. And then finally, our last goal is to establish 21st Century classrooms, and this is twofold. We're actually threefold, but we have three objectives, but that includes the technology, the infrastructure. So know that when we look at infrastructure, that's one of our key components. If we were truly going to be a blended one-to-one environment, where all students in grades six through 12, we're going to have a device, we had to have the infrastructure in place to provide that for students. So there's been a lot of work around Mr. Pierce and his staff, Mr. Grace, to not only provide infrastructure, but educate our teachers on how to wisely use those devices in the classroom. And we're still working on it. They're not going to have all the kinks worked out with how to use these devices, and we've also increased the ratios at our elementary schools. So to know that we have technology programs, so this is Riverdale, for example, with their fifth grade students, they try to use title funding to really use coding and technology in a novel way. So you can see the green screen presentations that they're doing. But they're also working with coding Spiros robots throughout the schools, and Dash and Dot robots, that really teaches them those early steps of coding. So we're trying to embed that technology into their classrooms. And the key piece is really teaching, and this is what Mr. Grace does, those teachers how to use those products and those devices and software in their classrooms. Some exciting features that we have seen coming is with our Raptor system. Unfortunately, it's becoming more common for there to be school shootings than there are school fires. There's, I think, 100 times more deaths in school shootings than there are school fires. We are being proactive about how to prepare for this in our school district, and so we're using technology to do that. So all of our teachers have an app on their phone, so if there was a lockdown, if there was a school shooting, they can immediately take a digital role that is shared with the police department, with the community. If there's someone injured in their classroom while they're currently on lockdown, we can share that type of information. As I've shared in the past, our SWAT team have real-time footage of the hallways, the cameras, and the classrooms, so they also have keys to every facility and building. So we are working with our police department here in Germantown, and also with our technology to make sure that we have all the tools to be prepared if something like that happened in Germantown. And then last but not least, we do have a detailed master's facility plan, and we have made huge investments since we inherited 26 million in deferred maintenance towards improving our schools. So examples, Dogwood Elementary School, we've invested over 2.6 million, I won't list all the things. Farmington Elementary, 2.5 million. Riverdale, they had a new wing built on, so they've had over 17 million. They're about to have a lot more done at Riverdale this summer with new ceiling, tall and grid. Houston Middle and Houston High School, we spent over 5 million at those schools. And know, of course, we have Forest Hill that is opening, and the central office that we spent over 34 million in those Kaplan projects. So whether it's in the classroom, or whether it's facilities, we are trying to make improvements to our district. Status quo is not something where we want to stay. We want to make sure we're always striving for excellence. I will take a moment to focus briefly on our general fund reserve. I think there's confusion about our reserve. Know that on a balance sheet, it looks like we have $16 million sitting in our reserve for Kaplan improvements, but we have taken money out and allocated money for specific projects. So Forest Hill, for example, when we first presented to the BMA, we projected it was going to be a 27 to a $32 million project. It is a $30 million project. So we were pretty dead on on those estimates. So what the district has done is we've taken 3 million from our reserve to finish the Riverdale project. The district office, we put in $1 million for that project from our reserve. Regular Kaplan improvements, so we were doing bathrooms at multiple schools, that was another million that we pulled from our reserve. Also with Houston Middle School, needs an expansion because of the growth that we've seen in that area. So know that we have pulled over 3 million for Houston Middle School's expansion to match the city's putting in 5 million towards that project. Now, the other money is how we have to keep our savings account. The state requires that we keep 3% of our operating fund in our savings account that we can't touch. It's the 3% rule. So for us, that equates to 1.8 million. But there's also a cash flow issue in the school district. We don't get money until you pay your property taxes. So if you think about when your property tax bill comes, that comes in December and February. So we have to have enough money in the bank to pay most of our bills coming all the way from July until we get those payments in December. That's the $5 million that we keep in there, and it's kind of scary, because you see it, and all of a sudden, we're baking payroll, we're paying for things, that money starts decreasing. So we've got to keep that 5 million there. And then of course, we had increased sales tax, increased revenue at 1.8 million for this year. So really, the unrestricted amount that we have sitting in our savings account at the end of this year is about 2.3 million. And it's my expectation that when we go to bid for different projects, we're always having to come in and support those projects with additional funding from the district. Know that we have had a very strategic plan to get more funding. So I don't know if y'all read the article in the paper about Kaplan improvements, but Shelby County has not been giving us our funding as quickly as we would like. They're giving us the money when Shelby County actually does a draw on their capital funding. So even though it's been allocated, we have not been receiving that capital funding. So they're about two years in the rears, it's about 5.2 million. We have been actively talking about this to the media, we've been talking about that, that's Mr. Whaley, who's one of our county commissioners, and we are excited because we believe that they're going to start appropriating that money monthly. So we think we have made inroads to receiving that funding that's been appropriated for us. But it has been a political effort for us to try to receive that funding. And then, last but not least, yes, you can see the article there from the commercial appeal and the letter that we received from the county commission. Thank you all, I know that's a lot, I try to do it as quickly as possible. I could sum it up with one word. We are really excited about our schools, I hope y'all are too, about what your children are experiencing. My children are here, my son just graduated from Houston, and they are going on to bigger and better things. I couldn't be more proud of our school district, or our staff, or our school board for the decisions that y'all have helped us make, to take care of our students and our families and our students. And it doesn't matter what metric you pick, we are doing great things. But I don't want that to be taken as we're happy with status quo. And I know we use the term excellence always, I talked about this in our retreat, excellence is not a one-time thing that, oh, I'm excellent, I'm done. We always have to strive to improve. With that, that concludes the long superintendent's report, and thank you all for bearing with me.
It is time for citizens to be heard. If there are people who are here who would like to speak, who have not already filled out a citizens-to-be-heard form, please do get one, they are just beyond the doors to your left, and return it to Ms. Subramani, who is our board secretary seated just in front of me. I have taken the 13 that I have received and put them in alphabetical order, because that's the most fair way that I know to do things. And I'm going to read the instructions on citizens to be heard, and then we will begin. GMSD, by its policy, allows persons to address the board during the citizens-to-be-heard section of its agenda, but only within certain guidelines. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at school board meetings. Thus, there is no inherent or legal right of citizens to make comments during a school board meeting. Prior to making your remarks, you must state your name, your address, and the subject of your presentation. The chair would remind you that if there are several persons who are intending to express the same sentiment, GMSD board rules require that you designate one spokesperson to speak for your position. If you do not do so, and the chair determines that comments made are cumulative, the chair will direct the speaker to cease their remarks. Individuals addressing the board shall address their remarks to the chair. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. In accordance with GMSD policy SB 1.404, remarks will be limited to three minutes unless time is extended by the board or otherwise reduced by the chairman to reflect the number of citizens to be heard. TCA statute 39-17-306 provides that it is a Class B misdemeanor to intentionally prevent or disrupt a school board meeting. Please be advised that any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the aforementioned rules will not be permitted to continue or make their remarks at this meeting. As I said this evening, 13 individuals have indicated their desire to address the board. You will have three minutes, and I would remind you that if your remarks are cumulative, if you have already heard the same sentiment from someone else, I will stop you while you're talking. So please do plan to make your remarks, remarks that are not cumulative, remarks that have not already been addressed. So we will begin with the first person, and that is Carrie Alley. And I will start your time after you have stated your name, your address, and your subject.
Hello, I'm Carrie Alley. I'm a resident in Germantown at 2553 Rooksworth Cove. The purpose, my topic is also what I need to state, and that would be the change to the culture expected at Dogwood Elementary School. I also want to put this out there, I'm a published biomedical research engineer, but most importantly, I'm a parent to three Dogwood Elementary students, and we love Dogwood Elementary. I'm not here tonight to argue the science regarding the placement of a cell tower on elementary school property. What is most important to me is that many of our Dogwood family members have done their own research and have made the decision that they will not put their child at Dogwood this fall, should the tower be installed. When it comes to the health of our children, a parent's perception becomes their reality, and they will act accordingly. Dogwood currently has a fantastic reputation. I am a huge believer that the culture and the education of our school rivals any school in the area, and that includes the private schools around here. Dogwood has an active, involved PTO who's tremendously successful at fundraising, which provides free family events to our community and our Dogwood family. On any given day, you will see parents on campus to help with these events, to tutor our students, or just to be there to have lunch with their children. I would say that all of this is absolutely being put at risk, over the decision to install a cell tower on our campus. Families are already choosing to leave, and it moves me to tears that our Farmington families who were rezoned to Dogwood are here to help preserve our beloved Dogwood community, and they haven't even had a chance to experience it yet, but they want to be a part of it, and that says a lot. I understand these plans were made to improve cell phone reception for our teachers, and improving their reception is a good thing. But I would like to know, did we stop to ask if our teachers are okay with this proposed solution? If so, are they still okay with the solution with the new location? Or will they choose not to be at Dogwood next year, as they've had time to research the possible health risks? I'm not against cell towers, I'm just against the cell tower at Dogwood Elementary. Our teachers, administrators, and families are Dogwood's greatest resources in making this school as fantastic as it is. These are the only opinions that should be considered in this issue, as they are the ones that stand to lose the most from this. I would offer that as our school board, your priority is to protect these resources, which in this case means breaching the contract with Tower Ventures, whatever the cost, our Dogwood community is worth it. Your DES families are here to support you as you make the right decisions, so I'd ask that you please be there to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alley. Next is Ms. Jennifer Bell. I would remind you that you have three minutes, and I will start your time after you state your name, your address, and your reason for speaking.
I'm Jennifer Bell, from 2111 Presswick Drive. Today at your strategic planning retreat meeting, and again tonight, I heard a lot of great plans for the future of GMSD, but one topic really bothered me. Goal three was mobilize community using, quote, "a multifaceted communication approach when making decisions of significant importance that affects, that impacts students and families." You also said that your goal was to actively engage the media, and this afternoon you said, "and push stories that we think are important to our students and families." You completely failed to do any of this for the Dogwood community with regard to the cell tower. I can only assume that that was not an accidental decision, and because you completely failed to provide us any communication before it was already too late, I'm asking you to pay Tower Ventures for their expenses thus far and walk away from this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Next is Nora Daher. Did I pronounce that properly? Probably not. Daher? I'll let you pronounce it.
My name is Dr. Daher. My kids go to Dogwood, and so this affects me from a personal standpoint, but it also affects me because I have patients that also go to Dogwood.
And would you state your address, please?
Yes, it's 2119 Star Meadow Cove, Germantown, 38139.
Thank you.
My topic was health issues. My topic was health issues with this cellphone tower. I emailed everybody, and I received one response. So because of that, thank you. I was going to read the email that I sent to you yesterday evening so that everybody could hear it. I, like many parents, are outraged by the placement of the cellphone tower on Dogwood's campus. I'm even more outraged when it appears moving at a few extra feet seems to be a viable option. Quite frankly, it disgusts me. We are starting to see how cellphone towers impact other communities. The most alarming at this time appears to be Roupon, California, where Sprint, that operated that tower, has now turned it off and plans to move the tower because of the suspicions that this could be linked to children and teachers at that school being diagnosed with cancer. Unfortunately, it's hard, over time, to figure out if there's a direct link or not, but when there's a higher rate of cancer in one common area, and that's the only common factor there, then it leads you to think that that might be an association. Shouldn't we learn from the past to improve instead of putting political, or monetary, or self-serving values first? We will find out in another five years or so how this affects our children, these young teachers of childbearing age, and young staff members if you choose to put that tower on school property. I think all of us, you mentioned vaping. So do you know what vaping does? We don't know yet. We suspect that it's going to cause chronic lung disease, like smoking. Back in the day, we didn't know what smoking would do. So it used to say, oh, mothers that are pregnant can smoke. Well, now look what we've found. They have COPD, they have emphysema, they're on end-stage, they're end-stage liver lung disease with, they're oxygen-dependent. Now we know. Why should we put our children through that to make this in five years something that we find? You know? This is, what about asbestos? Asbestos, years later, now we found it causes mesothelioma. Back in the day, it was okay to be, okay to use. A few extra feet in one direction or another won't change this health risk. If this is going to be a 5G tower, we don't know what this is going to do to our children. Why make our children and these innocent, very young children a study and put them in potential harms way? I'm very disappointed in your initial knee-jerk vote on the placement of this tower. However, you have the opportunity now to put your political-driven decision aside and actually think about these young children, the teachers, these are your staff, these are your staff that are at this school, and the firemen that spend hours at that location there.
Thank you, Dr. Daher. If you would come forward and state your name, your address, and your subject.
Catherine Flea, 2657 Sweet Maple Cove. My subject is the contract with Tower Ventures. I understand that it's a 35-year contract with no out. A GMSD employee admitted to me personally that the only out in this contract is a mutual out. I'm not a lawyer, but I negotiate contracts every day at work. I know a mutual out is no out. I would never accept those terms from a selling entity, so why did you? Why would a seller ever agree to let you out of a contract when they're getting paid by all of these cellular companies? They won't agree to it, therefore that's no-out clause. When children leave this school and house values decrease, and you someday realize the effects of this poor decision, you will have no choice because you agreed to a 35-year contract with no out. These children depend on the adults that have been sworn and elected to protect them, to make decisions with their best interests in mind. I would ask you now, is this really in their best interests? I don't think so. Breach this contract, whatever the cost.
Thank you, Ms. Flea. Next is Lex Hester. If you would come forward, state your name, your address, and your subject, and then I'll begin your time.
My name is Lex Hester. I live at 9309 Wheatland Drive, 38139. My position is the fact that perception is reality. We're all aware that the counterargument to the health concern that many parents have presented in regard to the cell tower is the fact that there's no conclusive evidence or no concrete evidence showing that cell towers even pose a health risk. However, this is a situation where the perception is reality. Evidence or no evidence, it shouldn't matter. As elected official, your job is to protect the overall well-being of our city and schools. Public perception is reality, and our schools are the Germantown's, are the city of Germantown's largest and most valuable asset. Why risk that? Why risk tanning the reputation of our school? The number-one reason people actively move to Germantown are the schools. The schools are the reason why property values have increased, and people just really desire to live here. Why put a cell tower that carries negative public reception next to one of our best schools, our best elementary schools? When I moved to Germantown, I specifically moved into that area that was zoned for Dogwood because it was one of the best elementary schools that we could start with our children, and I will have four children that will go through that school. It's disheartening that our public officials did not consider the negative ramifications that a cell tower located on the campus of one of our elementary schools would have, nor the potential impact it poses on our community. I strongly urge you to find another placement option for this tower in order to preserve our great community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Renee Lynn. If you'll state your name, your address, and your subject, then I'll begin your time.
My name is Renee Lynn. I live at 8987 Ashmere Drive, and my topic is homeowners' concern. We live just a stone throws away from Dogwood Park, literally right across the street. My children attend Dogwood and Houston Middle School. We have many concerns with the cell tower placement, but I will highlight just a few. The current proposed location is pretty much the same distance from my house as it is from the school, which means that my daughter, who is still at Dogwood, will have constant radiation exposure from this tower. I don't feel comfortable with this, and I can't imagine that any of us would, because there's just too many questionable health risks associated. We moved into this home 10 years ago so that our children could walk to the park, through the park to school. That provides a safe and secure environment. My 13-year-old son still goes to the park to play almost every day. We now have walkie-talkies, like they can ride their bikes. It's so fun to watch them grow and independence on their own. And we're very disturbed here about the extent that this could disrupt just the park and the location and everything that it may do to the playground. Should the cell tower be placed in such a close proximity to our school and our home, we will be faced with difficult decisions, such as changing schools or moving, which then, of course, leads to the property value problem. In the time that we have lived here, we have been approached regarding topics such as aesthetics of changing something as simple as a street sign, or placing a speed bump in the neighborhood, or the traffic flow and safety on Ashmere Drive due to the schoolchildren going back and forth. We've also attended Parks and Recs meetings on the planning and development of the current location of the Dogwood Park playground. So it's kind of hard to understand how we've gotten to this point with such a major decision that there has not been more communication and involvement extended to us in such a close proximity to the school as homeowners and of parents of children at Dogwood. The bottom line is, I'm here on behalf of my family to ask you to please breach the contract. I'm sorry, I'm a crier. It doesn't mean that I'm weak, I'm invested. And please breach the contract with Tower Ventures, or at the very least, search for a more suitable location that is at or beyond the recommended minimum of 1,500 feet of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Paul Hickey. Again, if you would state your name, your address, and your subject.
Good evening. My name is John Paul Hickey. I live at 8812 Rock Maple Cove, 38139. I'm a father of two Dogwood students, and I'm here tonight to talk about the communication, communication specifically around the cellphone tower placement. According to the Germantown Municipal School District website, one of the roles of the board, I think role number five, is promotion. It states, "The board shall keep the local community informed about the school system, its accomplishments, and its actions, and build public support for the schools by involving the public in planning process to the extent possible." We've talked about this a lot tonight, great reports, but that process hasn't happened with the cell tower. I will go back and kind of list some of the great things that the school board has done in communications. Having two students there, I'm on all kinds of email lists. I get all sorts of texts around, you know, where the new school was going, where the new zoning was happening, the traffic issues around the schools, around pickup and drop-off. I've got notifications about the lead testing, and even the janitorial sink was fine to drink out of. My kids don't ride the bus, but I get notifications about if a bus is late or not. So all that is to say is the communication has been excellent, but it has just really fallen off the cliff here. We've heard nothing, absolutely nothing about the cell tower. All this has been done through us trying to figure it out. There was some stakes posted out at Dogwood, and we started asking questions. And I really stress it, that this has just been a large failure on the part of the, on the school board, and I would really appreciate if you would rectify the situation by breaching the contract with cell towers, or cell ventures. Thank you.
Thank you. Another name that I'm going to butcher. Ruchi Khat Cake? She had to leave? Okay. Jessie Moore? If you would state your name, your address, and your subject, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Moore, 2651 Holly Springs Drive, Germantown, Tennessee, 38138. I believe in a strong public school system. I've said that before. I really appreciate this board. Thank you to everyone who serves our schools and strives to continually adapt and improve our community. Today, I would like to thank members of the school board for taking on the personal responsibility of your leadership roles, anything from taking on the challenges of predicting school populations and trying to get that right, which is hard in a sought-after school district, also developing strong employee benefits to make us a strong community. Today, I want to focus on coordinating school health and ensuring a healthy school environment. We rely on you to do, to avoid unnecessary risk and always do what is best for our children. You are our guardians. I work with medical devices, and simply put, it is my job to demonstrate that a product is safe before it touches any human being. From my perspective, it's absurd to think that building a tower with radio frequency radiation on a school campus is being considered. I'll skip some of this here. The truth is laws and research cannot keep up with radio frequency radiation technology. Think about asbestos and how prolific it was before the carcinogenic effects were discovered. We must proactively protect our children by saying no to the tower until proven safe. No compromise. Don't be on the wrong side of history. March 2018, there's an article coming from Environmental Research out of Italy, building on the U.S. Toxicology NTP Study. Brain tumors, heart tumors are being found. There is evidence from these epidemiologic studies, and there are known warning signs. Please breach the contract.
Thank you. Next is Toni Nygren. Did I pronounce that correctly? If you will state your name, your address, and your subject, please.
My name is Toni Nygren. I live at 1824 Johnson Road, and I'm talking about the duties of board members. The parents have been repeatedly told that this contract was signed for the safety of Dogwood Elementary. They were told that this contract, that this cell tower would help cellphone communication in an emergency. However, sadly, it's become apparent that some have violated their duties of the board members. According to the Germantown Municipal Board of Education Policy Manual, under Board Operations, item number 1.202, Duties of Board Members, duty number five says to vote and act impartially for the good of the school system. On August 20, 2018, during a GMSD Board of Education work session, some board members clearly violated this. A board member asked, "And this will increase our cell service inside Dogwood School?" And a GMSD administrator said, "I can't guarantee that, because the block, well, the block wall goes up, and it really does a good job at keeping signals out, but I've got to imagine that putting a cellphone tower up literally right there on the property." I mean, then another school board member stated, "I'd be happy if it increases the cellphone reception at my house." To which then the administrator said, "Your odds are a whole lot better there. We are hopeful that it will also do good work at Dogwood Elementary." So clearly, the members that were there heard that it might not even help Dogwood, that they were hopeful. They were told that there were specifically no guarantees. So how will it help Dogwood if it doesn't increase the reception of the school? How is approving this tower for the good of the school system? It seems to me like the board decided to make a decision for either their own personal reception or the reception of the community, but clearly not for the good of Dogwood. This contract should have never been signed. Please breach the contract, whatever the cost.
Thank you. Next is Ann Parker. Again, please state your name, your address, and your subject.
I'm Ann Parker at 8388 Del Out Cove. I'm speaking to you, sorry, on the school transfers. I stand before you in April, my husband and I put in a transfer for Forest Hill Elementary, which we've missed the deadline. And along with that, we've been looking into all the private schools that we can get into. We have two kids, same grade. That's a very difficult thing to do. Let me collect myself a minute. It's a very difficult thing to try to place two kids in the same grade in a private school. I also stand here to tell you that I'm not alone in this process. We, as a group, have collectively created our numbers and figured out that there are 57 children whose parents have asked for a transfer to Forest Hill as of 3:00 p.m. today. We have seven going to private schools and three that will be doing a homeschool program. If these transfers are not granted to the new school, we will go private. And that implication to you guys is a huge number, because there's 57 kids. Please choose our school, Dogwood Elementary, over this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Walker? Again, if you'll state your name, your address, and your subject.
My name's Sam Walker. I live at 2020 Spring Hollow Lane, 38139. So I sent this email earlier today. All of you have it. I'm going to go ahead and read it now, in case you don't get a chance to. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sam Walker, and I'm a proud resident of Germantown. I've actually coached many of your kids in football, baseball, and lacrosse. My wife, Mindy, and I relocated here three years ago from Oakland. The number-one reason we chose Germantown was for the amazing schools for our two children. Before moving our kids here, we were at St. Francis, and we felt so comfortable with GMSD that we decided to remove them from the private school system and place them here where they could grow, not only in education, but also socially and culturally. I first want to thank you for the incredible job that all of you have obviously done with GMSD. It is truly one of the best school systems in the state, if not the country, and we couldn't be happier with our decision to move here. However, I know that at this moment, you all are getting bombarded with emails and phone calls regarding the location of the 5G tower on the campus at Dogwood, and we are one of those concerned families, so concerned, in fact, that we are seriously considering putting up our house on the market in order to move into another school zone. I know that the internet is not the safest place, or the safest form of research, but I have done light searching, and I'm overwhelmed with the amount of information that points to this not being the safest idea. All you got to do is Google 5G. You won't see descriptions of cell towers. You won't see a lot of benefits of 5G cell towers. You won't see a lot of benefits of 5G cell towers, but you will be flooded with information on how the science and technology has not thoroughly been tested and how it could potentially be harmful to children when exposed to these increased levels of radiation over long periods of time. You also will see how communities are responding to similar situations throughout the country with 5G not in favor. I really wonder if you've done the research on this topic because I cannot imagine that you would have decided to place this tower over our children. I have to believe that this is a drastic oversight, and if you have done the research, please show us what you have read that proves that this technology is safe being so close to our children. Surely, there is proven research where this technology has been tested and proven safe, and that is why you have made this decision. I couldn't, I couldn't find anything proving this technology is safe to be this close to our children. School zones all over the country are reaching, are reacting to this, some of which are reacting after the fact, some of which are reacting after the fact, which may show a relationship to 5G and health problems. Let's, don't let that happen in our community. Let's not regret this later. Our number one job as parents and guardians is to keep our children safe, and if there is a chance that we aren't, then what are we doing? So do we have the research that this technology is proven safe for our children? Can you release this research? Are there other options for the location or the technology to improve the cell reception? What is the problem with moving it further away?
Thank you. And next is Bess Warren. If you please state your name, your address, and your subject, then I'll start your time.
Hi, I'm Bess Warren, 2489 Nether Hall Drive, Germantown, Tennessee, 38139. We walk to Dogwood. I am speaking on school change, and what I mean by that is how Dogwood will change if this tower is constructed. The people who have chosen to get on the waiting list for Forest Hill, or tour private schools, or look into homeschool cooperatives are all people I know. They're very serious. They're not doing this to bluff. They're not doing this to scare you, to get you to change your mind, then they'll be like, oh, whatever. They're very serious. A lot of these people are on the PTO board. A lot of these people are the people who run our school. They will not be there next year if you put this cellphone tower up this summer. I don't even know how the school's gonna operate. I also wore my sticker into field day and I had like four staff members come up to me and be like, "Thank you so much for wearing that sticker. We don't want this tower." And I don't know if they're telling their supervisors that, but that is how they feel. If I were a teacher who was thinking about increasing my family and I was working in a school with a cellphone tower sitting right outside of it, I think I might get a different There's so much that will change. Dogwood Park is a precious place that we have watched our children grow up. We let our kids run around Dogwood Park and there's a Bluebird Trail. A lot of environmentalists would be very upset to know that the Bluebird Trail is soon gonna have a driveway going through it with a cellphone tower in the middle of Dogwood Park won't be that safe, precious place. We bought our school, we bought our house because we wanted to be able to walk to school and we wanted to be able to walk to the best school, and we felt like Dogwood was the best school. It's hard not to be a little depressed right now at Dogwood because we're seeing a lot of awesome teachers moving on to Forest Hill. They're getting, you know, their new mascot celebration and we're getting a cell tower. Yay. It's a little depressing right now. We would love it if you guys could change your mind and at least delay this or get out of the contract altogether. It's just, it's gonna be really bad for our school, and nobody here is kidding and nobody here is bluffing. They're very serious about moving out of the school, and that's a lot of dollars. If you're looking at $8,000 a kid that's no longer in the school district, that's a lot of dollars. So whatever it is you would have to pay to get out of this contract, I think would be well worth it. And I really appreciate you guys, and I know that you didn't do this on purpose to do any harm to anyone. I know you were thinking of the cell service being a great thing, but I think all of us have learned so much in the past year about cell towers and the potential there for things we don't want. So, I just please encourage you guys to reserve the right to change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our Citizens to Be Heard. We move to our Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are items 8A through 8E, Approval of the Minutes, Annual Review/Revision of Policies, Second Reading, Annual Review/Revision of Policies, First Reading, Approval of Fiscal Year 1920 Consolidated Funding Application, and Miscellaneous GMSD Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budget Amendments Number 2930 and 31. Is there a motion to approve the items in the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve all the items in the Consent Agenda.
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Landers. Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to the Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion?
Board action items?
I'm sorry. I moved farther down.
We move to the Board Action Items, Item 9A, Approval of Nomination for 2019 TSBA School Volunteer Recognition Award. Mr. Manuel.
Each year, the Tennessee School Board Association allows districts to nominate those volunteers who are making a district in their schools. Know that we've reached out to our administration and individuals in our school, and so we did have a nomination from Farmington Elementary School. A parent, and I'm sure I would mispronounce her name, Taliban, or not Taliban, Talaba Quorker. Because of her dedication to the school, she works tirelessly in the library, shelving books, working with the librarian, and so it is our request that the board nominate this person for an award with Tennessee School Board Association.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the nomination of Talaba Quorks for the TSBA School Volunteer Recognition Award.
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to Item 9B, Approval for Purchase of Social Studies, World Languages, and CTE
This is just a request to approve the amount not to exceed the $590,000 for textbooks for all of our students for social studies, K-12, foreign languages, and CTE business and accounting. We have to go to Board Approval because it is over the $100,000 threshold.
Thank you, Dr. Park. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of textbooks for CTE business, social studies, and world languages from Tennessee Book Company in the amount of $590,539.20.
The motion has been made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. Oof. Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to Item 9C, GMSD General Fund Budget Fiscal Year 2019-2020. After the Second Reading, Mr. Jones.
We're asking the board to approve the total operating budget for the 2019-20 year at The major changes since the first reading include two regular education teachers, one social worker, and a half FTE foreign EIS analyst.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the GMSDFY 2019-20 General Fund Budget after Second Reading.
It's been, the motion has been made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Landers. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 9D is GMSD Fiscal Year 2019-20 Federal Capital Cafeteria Health Insurance and OPEB Budgets after First Reading, Mr. Jones.
Just asking for your approval for each of those budgets on the first reading. On the Federal Projects Fund, we may be looking at revisions in the second reading for Perkins Reserve and IDEA discretionary.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the GMSDFY 2019-20 Federal Capital Cafeteria Health Insurance and OPEB Budgets after First Reading, presented by Mr. Jones.
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Griffith and seconded by Ms. Oof. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Fisher?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Jones and his staff and the district staff for all their work on the budget as well as the federal capital and cafeteria and health insurance budget. Thank you.
I also would like to thank the staff and Mr. Jones for their hard work on this, and I just want to point out, like I did in the work session, we provide preschool, IDEA preschool because it is required, but it's a wonderful service to the community and we do an outstanding job of it. Thank you, Ms. Huffman, for all the work that you do for that. But the funding that we receive for all of our preschools, one amount of $13,000 and $14,408, that is all we receive for preschool funding. Just throwing that out there.
Are you ready to vote? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to Item 9E, Contract Renewal with ARA Mark, and my understanding is that that is tabled? Until the June meeting. Thank you. Item 9F, Maintenance Contract Extension, Mr. Kathy.
Thank you. This is a one-year contract extension with GCA Education Services. They have been doing maintenance actually since the beginning of our school district, so this would actually be their sixth year. There is a 2% increase in the contract, so we do recommend approval of that in the amount of $464,456.28. This will be a one-year contract extension, so it will come back before the board in July of next year.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve a one-year contract extension with the GCA Education Services, Inc., in the amount of $464,456.28, beginning July 1st, 2019, continuing through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
The motion was made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Oof. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 9G, TML Insurance Renewal, Mr. Kathy.
This is the renewal of our TML insurance. This is for our workers' compensation, employer's liability, general liability, property, and student accident insurance. Property did have an increase on the premium of $26,849. That's mainly due to adding Forest Hill Elementary and the district office that will be coming online to our property insurance. Workers' compensation had a decrease of $915. As such, and as Mr. Jones presented in work session, that budget was decreased to reflect that decrease in that premium. Liability had a decrease of $3,651. Student accident, a decrease of $5,750. So a total premium increase of $16,533. That's all due to Forest Hill Irene and the new district office coming online for property insurance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the TML insurance renewal for workers' compensation and employer's liability, general liability, property liability, and student accident insurance.
Second.
It's been, the motion has been made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 9H is Bid Approval for the Houston High School Athletic Field House, Mr. Kathy.
This has been in the works for quite some time. As far as the fundraising and the design, this, this project has basically had four legs to it from the beginning. There was a donor, a private donor who generously donated a million dollars to this project. The school district is in for a million dollars for this project. The city of Germantown contributes a million dollars for this project, and various community donors are also in for a million dollars for this project. So we have been through a design committee work and we finally got to bid day, and we did have a rough bid opening. The bid came in much higher than expected. So what you will see is a bid tabulation. We are recommending to go ahead and approve this bid so that we can begin construction and work on this project. The low bidder was Grinder, Tabor, Grinder, and the bid amount was $3,590,500. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid number GMSDFY 2019-0005 for the Houston High School Athletic Field House project in the amount of $3,590,500 with Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder.
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. I think it's important, we discussed this a little bit earlier today and we've discussed it in the past, this is a unique situation when you have a, a community member that steps up to the plate literally and figuratively from a financial donation standpoint to this degree or magnitude. But because of the nature of the stipulations that were attached to it, it requires that we do this in a certain timeframe, which might be a little out of order of how we might have done things otherwise. To your point, and as we've continued to see historically in the past few bids that we've received for projects, they're not getting any less expensive. And, and this was a surprise, I think, to all of us, but sadly, it's just kind of fallen the pattern that we continue to see. This is an exciting head in the direction of this project that we've all been anticipating. It is tricky, and I know we all ask kind of some questions and, and we understand the timetable that's part of this. I just want to make sure the public sort of understands because as people look at this, we know, and we've been posed the questions to us as we've posed them ourselves, you know, when you look at, well, why the field house instead of something else? Because this money is just for that. And so it's really important to understand that that's what it was intended for. It just happens to come in that the project's a little higher than we originally thought.
Yes, Ms. Fisher?
It's not that I'm not in support of the field house. I think this will be a great asset to Houston High, but it ended up coming in a million over. And so for us to accomplish that, we are gonna have to take funds from other projects, and I think the community should be aware of that. We have to, one of the stipulations is we have to break down, break ground in August or begin construction to receive the donation from the community member. So I just think people should know what, what we're, what we are facing, and I, I believe the board would like to see this project done. It will be a great asset, and it's also, it also shows the community coming together with the city, a private donor, as well as donors from the community to, to add something that will help our athletes.
And I would add that this is the beginning of a multi-tiered project. It is not just athletics, but it is also arts. So we will see before December 15th, the breaking ground of a band addition, and then after that completion, the paddock and the auditorium renovations. So, it is an exciting step in the direction of So it is an exciting step in the direction of partnerships with the community. I am disappointed in the bid. I don't think any of us are happy with the bid, but at the same time, to not accept it is to lose potentially $3 million worth of, of donation.
And I might add too, just so the public knows, that the donation was based on that 70% would go towards athletics and 30% would go to the fine arts.
Right.
Are you ready to vote? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Chairman Lutter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine I is Modular Classroom Removal. Mr. Kathy?
In this option, I really wanted to bring the board good information so that there really are three options that are available to the board this evening. As we looked at removing the modular classrooms, we actually got contacted by some of our school administrators and some of our parents wanting to keep the new modular classrooms there. Now, the four old portables at Farmington, they're going regardless this summer. They're already scheduled to be demolitioned and hauled away, but the newer portables that we put in at Dogwood and Farmington are the, are the item that's being discussed on this agenda. So I wanted to bring the board information and options so that the board can make an informed decision this evening. The first item that we brought to you was the cost of the install of the portables to get them on site. We've got nearly $800,000 invested in getting them on site to get all of the systems that are in the building out to those modulators. The cost to purchase those modulators is $776,140 for the modulators that are currently at Dogwood and Farmington. The cost of removal, and this isn't a cost estimate, it's a bid cost and it's a hard firm cost, is $131,894. If the board is not ready to make a long-term decision on those modulators, the lease cost we can just keep going with, that was approved by a previous board, and we can just keep going in the direction of a lease for another year that has a $180,000 price tag attached to it. If that is the board's will, then my recommendation would be simply to remove this item from the agenda, as it wouldn't require board action since the lease has been approved and the, and the modulators are on our property, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion?
I move that we remove the item from the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Oof that we remove the item from the agenda and seconded by Ms. Landers. Is there any discussion?
I'll speak to it since I made the motion. We are not in the business of educating our children in portables, whether we call them fancy names or not. They are very nice portables. The bathrooms are nicer than what we have in the schools. However, we just built or are building a beautiful new building for our children, and if there is, if we see that there is a problem with our, our numbers, then that is not a problem with our ability to house those children, it is a problem with our zoning, in my opinion. Therefore, I think it is wise for us to hold on to the modular classrooms until we see the impact of this new zoning on our schools. So we'll have them for one year and relook at this next year and see if we need to, to look at rezoning again, which all of us do not love. But as Ms. Landers has said, zoning is a living, breathing thing. It's going to flex and it's going to move because people move and the children age. So that's why I have moved to remove that from our, from our agenda.
Ms. Fisher?
I just might add that the discussion at our, our work session did entail discussion with our superintendent that we did not want to see classrooms
Yes.
in the modular classrooms, grade level, that they would stay in the building where it's safe and secure and use the, the portables outside for O T or P T or speech, things like that, that we would not have grade level classrooms, because one of the whole reasons we build new schools, we want everybody in, in brick and mortar in a safe environment.
And we don't want people traveling back and forth between the school and the building without an accompaniment, and if you put a full classroom, you have a greater chance of a child needing to travel without a teacher or without an adult supervision.
Any other discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chairman Lutter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine J is the Amendment to Option Land Lease Agreement with Tower Ventures. Mr. Kathy, are you here to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. What you have on the agenda in the attachments is a proposed amendment to our original contract with Tower Ventures. In this proposed amendment to our existing contract, the amendment changes the proposed location to the tower. The location change is agreeable to Tower Ventures. The location puts the tower over in Dogwood Park, but it is still legally on our G M S D property. Under the new proposed location, the cell phone tower would be 253 feet from the furthest corner of Dogwood Elementary School building and 364 feet from the newly constructed playground at Dogwood. As far as what this would look like for the board procedurally, because I want to be clear on that to the board and to the public, what this would look like if the board takes this motion up and there is a no vote, the original contract has already been approved, and the original contract and the original location, more importantly, has already gone through the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and the Design Review Commission. So what a no vote would look like on this proposed amendment would be that it has, the original location has already gone through all the approval processes, processes with the exception of the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So that's what a no vote would look like on this proposed amendment. What a yes vote would look like on this proposed amendment would, would be that we'd have an amendment to our contract with Tower Ventures, and the new location would have to go back before the Planning Commission, back before the Design Review Commission, and then assuming it makes through, assuming it makes it through those approval processes, then to the Board of Mayor and Alderman still as the final approving body. So with that, I will turn it over to the board, be happy to answer any questions. I think Superintendent Manuel wants to comment as well.
And I do have one point of clarification, too. Also know that if the, the board did decide to approve this because there's a change in location, that would invalidate the project development contract because it specifies the location, so we would have to create a new project development contract with a new location for the city's purposes and bring that back to the board. So know that it's twofold. So if, if the board did approve nine J, then we got to, we would remove nine K from the agenda until we can get a revised nine K.
Great. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the option in land lease agreement with Tower Ventures.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Fisher. I want to comment that we are not here to discuss whether or not we are going to enter into a contract. The contract was entered into in September after being discussed at the August work session and tabled for public input. All that is before the board now is whether we approve the amendment which moves the tower farther away from the school, but which will require Tower Ventures to begin the approval process again, first with the Planning Commission, then with the Board of Zoning and Appeals, the Design and Review Commission, and then finally, the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Is there any further discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to speak a moment if I could. I'm in a special circumstance in that I live a less, less than one mile from Dogwood Elementary School. I have two children that attend it. I also have horrible cell phone coverage, and I'll be the first to tell you that. I will also say that tonight, when we heard about communication, I heard and knew about the, the consideration in the, in the contract originally signed, and it was not until I saw it marked off at the school property that it made me pause. I was like, okay, we're doing this. I heard the meeting minutes when they happened the next day. I think actually I listened to them. I usually, at that time, listen to them the next day. And I understood what the purpose was at the time to increase safety and security in the school and the community for first responders. And again, at the end of January, when I saw and that site was so close to the school building, it made me pause. It made me ask a lot of questions to a lot of people, most of which are sitting up here with me. I asked the previous board about how this got to this place, how this happened. I reached out to Alderman and people on commissions and asked for a little bit of a history lesson through their process, and I still can't fully get all the answers. I did feel like we got some progress made. I'm grateful for the folks at Tower Ventures that worked with the city administrator, got us 115 extra feet. I don't think that suffices based on the comments that citizens to be heard tonight here or at the previous Board of Mayor and Alderman meetings or some of the other get-togethers around town that I have received correspondence about the discussions that occurred. That said, I think it's very clear that I hope everybody in this room understands what this contract is, what it looks like, and that it is being amended so it does start over the process. I needed everybody in here to know how, because I've heard from you. Most of you got the same with a few little peppered-in sentiments because I know a lot of you personally because you're Dogwood families, as am I. So a lot of times, there were a few little hey, here, there specifics, but the one thing that I did send to every single person I responded to was that I hear and understand your concerns because I share in them, and that I did my history lesson and my due diligence to try to understand this process. And I also, in all of my responses, said that I understood why the original vote on the contract won as it did, based on the good intentions and best intentions of the board. Here we are, time has passed, and a new contract has been amended and presented. This has been a tough couple of months at our school, some of you spoke to that. Exciting times going on in G M S D, a lot of you also spoke to that. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there's not one person in this audience or sitting up here that takes this lightly, and there was a lot of personal requests for legal counsel on my part. I felt that was my job as an elected official to seek that out, which I did. And so thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you, board and Ms. Estes and cabinet for all your work that you've done, because I have asked a lot of questions about this situation and this topic.
I want to take a minute to say thank you to each and every one of you that came out tonight, to all of you that emailed us, reached out to us. That's what it takes to have the school district we have. I appreciate the community's involvement. I know how much you care. Please trust when I say every one of us sitting up here cares about your children. We don't do the work we do for any other reason than that we care about the kids in our hometown. And to piggyback off what Ms. Griffith said, the decisions we make while, are not always what people want us to make, are made to the very best of our ability with the very best of intentions. Please understand, we care, and we want to do what's best for all of our children across this district, but thank you. Thank you for taking the time to let us hear from you.
Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Chairman Lutter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes us to item nine K, Project Development Contract Number 1228 for Dogwood Elementary School, having received a yes vote. Mr. Kathy?
Again, the recommendation would be to remove this item from the agenda because there's language in this project development contract that states the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission have approved this. Since the board chose to amend the location, that language is no longer valid in the project development contract, so my request would be to remove this from the agenda this evening until it goes back through the Planning Commission and Design Review Commission, and then the language is applicable and incorrect.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move to remove nine K from the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Oof has moved to remove item nine K from the agenda, and Ms. Landers has seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, please call the roll.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Chairman Lutter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes our business items. We have announcements that the last day of school is on its way. May 22nd and May 23rd are both half-days, and the next board business meeting is Monday, June 7th, here in the City Council Chambers. We stand adjourned.